Thank you. It is 6:03 PM and I'm calling to order the December 5th, 2023, meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School District School Committee. We will begin with public comment. Public comment guidelines can be found in section BEDH and BEDH-E of our policy manual. So I understand we have a couple of different groupings of public comment tonight. So I think what I'd like to do is separate those out. Anybody who is online, if you are joining us to make public comment for a special occasion rather than something about the agenda itself, please put your name in the chat, name and address in the chat. And while we wait on that, is there anyone in person who would like to make public comment on a special opportunity or specifically? Please stand up, say your name and address.
Yep, I'm in the front. I'm really short. Hi, I'm Caroline Well, I live in Manchester. I would like to send Avi off with a huge thank you for all he has done for our district. Don't make me cry. I joined the school committee about a year after Pam and Avi were hired. While some people may think he was just doing his job, I would like to say he went above and beyond the status quo. Avi took a central office that really had no policies and procedures in place and brought a sense of professionalism that was needed. With each new school committee member, Avi took the time to meet with us individually to explain the budget, how funding works, my daughter's texting me, for the district, and did so with such patience for those of us who didn't have any experience with this type of budgeting. He never wavered when advocating for what he felt was in the best financial interest of the district while always keeping in mind why we are all here, to provide the best education we can for the children of Manchester and Essex. He has been an incredible partner to both town boards and has presented budgets over the past 10 years in a calm, unlike myself, cool and collected manner, even when he has been challenged by those who have tried to discredit how the district's benefits mattered. I worked with Avi on all phases of the Memorial School Building project and can say he was one of the key drivers in getting the project approved and guiding us all along with Pam. Avi, we did miss. The district has been so lucky to have you and I could never drive under the bridge. If you know, you know.
For anyone joining online, if you're just jumping in, we're taking public comment right now. I understand there are people joining to make public comment specifically to wish Avi, to send Avi off. So if you would like to make public comment, please put your name and address in the chat. Moving on to the next in person.
I also, Avi actually was here when we hired Avi to do contract work for the high school building project. So I'm from Essex. I'm also a select board member, so I know that Avi is going to be missed from multiple boards, not just the school board but all vote towns. He has been unbelievable, somebody that, as Caroline said, he brought a sense of calm when he reported things to us, presented well, and always made the person he was talking to feel like they were the special one. So I have to say thank you to that. I also know that when Avi first came here and we got the Powys and Sullivan annual report, on that first year that Avi was there, there was probably three pages of things that needed to be worked on. And within a year, it was probably less than a half a page. So that, to me, always stuck with me and very impressive. Avi, I did make you something a little special.
I want to wish you luck.
I wish you too.
It's not $50.
Susan Kobyella from Essex. One of the good things about getting older is that I don't remember when and where I was on the school committee. I know it's often incorrect, it's 12 years or something. Served with most of these wonderful people sitting here in the audience. Served a long time with Pam before. And Avi, you came on, what, 2008?
Nine.
Nine? I was, it was a long time ago and I do remember. You brought so much stability and calmness and I know at Aldous Tuckman's job at the management letter, we'd get the management letter before pages long and we would just be quaking in our boots. And that, when that stopped happening, we knew that we had found a real gem in Avi. And he would come to both town meetings and he would speak calmly, he would answer questions always respectfully, not always respected. And that's very troubling to me from what I hear now that I've come out of retirement, school committee retirement to come here tonight. But Avi, I just want to thank you that this district is here today the way it is, in the very good and solid shape that it is, greatly due to you and your service to the district. And I can't, I can't thank you enough. And I can't thank these wonderful people sitting in the audience that we were all there once, working with you and loved every minute of it. So I want to wish you best, I hope you're going off happy and I hope that we can stay in touch with the district. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Susan. Go ahead.
Hey, Stan Luttrell from Essex. I'm actually going to read a couple of comments from Jeff Sular, who's our outgoing town accountant and also former FinCom Chair. So Avi started as the Director of Finance at roughly the same time I became Chair of the Essex Finance Committee. Over the next eight years, we developed a great working relationship and he was always a helpful partner as we worked through budgets and capital projects. During my time on the Finance Committee, we started the smaller collaboration meetings to try and be more proactive in planning around the issues facing two towns in the district. The idea was to look at things more holistically and determine the best path forward based on all the variables for the town and the district. I believe Avi was a driving force behind this new approach and during these meetings, he always came prepared with an open mind and a helpful suggestion to problems. We've been fortunate to have Avi in place for the last 15 years to help us navigate two building projects, a pandemic and countless challenging budget seasons. For certain, he was up to every challenge along the way and I want to take this opportunity to thank him for all of his efforts to move forward the district. I'm sorry to see him go, but I wish him all the best as he explores new challenges. So that's from Jeff. And I just want to say on a personal level, thank you very much. You know, you've had very long and dedicated service to the district. And I mean, I've been on the Finance Committee for seven years since 2017 and Chair for four. You've always been a helpful partner to me and you've always addressed questions with objectivity and an open mind, which I really appreciate. I've always marveled at your commitment, given your long commute and your highly evidenced skills, and I'm going to miss working with you. I'm particularly into the numbers. So again, many thanks, Avi, and I wish you all the best.
Anyone else, please? Avi, I'm here to thank you for your 15 years of dedication and commitment to the Manchester Essex Regional School District as its Director of Finance and Operations. Your work has always been commendable and those of us who have the opportunity to work closely with you as school committee members, town officials, parents and concerned citizens sincerely appreciate your contributions to our district. Your hard work and effort has directly and positively impacted the students of Manchester and Essex. When you arrived, the business office was barely existent, but you created systems and spreadsheets to get, spreadsheet to get our district on the right track and has been instrumental in numerous cost-saving initiatives. You are one of the most patient people I know, always ready to answer a call, explain a spreadsheet or talk through a difficult issue. You have spent many late nights and long meetings helping us all understand the intricacies of school finance, budget drivers, apportionments and assessments. You have patiently explained and re-explained the ins and outs of the budget to new school committee members, new finance committee members and new select boards as they have cycled through their terms. I have seen you handle many difficult situations with integrity, respect and a smile. I have always valued your wise counsel and insights and I've learned so much from working with you for seven years. I have great appreciation for all the work you have done, especially throughout COVID, when you figured out how to manage our expenses as we purchased PPE COVID tests, covered these of the absence and supported the necessities of remote learning all over Zoom, sometimes with extra pingless. Over the last few years, I've seen firsthand the amount of extra time and effort that you have put into our district and I hope that you know how much we appreciate you and how much we will miss you. Losing your expertise and knowledge leaves a gap that will not be easily filled. I wish you the best of luck as you take on the challenge of your new and well-deserved role in the private sector.
I'm Sarah Creighton, former school committee member and Chair of the High School, Middle School Building Committee and Member of the Memorial Building. Thanks, echo everything that's been said, but I took a little fun and seasonal work to try to echo my sentiments for Avi. 'Twas 2009, a school committee was meeting. Issues were stirring Annie's cookies we were eating. The budgets were prepared by the team with great care in hopes that the town meeting votes would soon be there. Our children were nestled all snug in their beds while visions of homework danced in their heads. And Judy in her seat and the rest at the table heard the word, "We had a consultant oh so able." The district welcomed him without much chatter. Avi sprang to the tasks, embraced the matter. Then away from the district, Judy went with a flash. Avi mastered the job from bonds to the cash. He was dressed in a suit from his head to his foot and his clothes were never tarnished with ashes or food. With a mastery of smell, he made the budgets right and he knew the answers of most things in sight. More rapid than eagles, his knowledge came and he whistled and solved problems he called by name. Now Joe, now Jason, let's get stuff fixed. On apportionment, on chapter 70, house rates are licked. From Essex to Manchester, he was always on call. What's A and B? What's the circuit breaker? He answers it all. Up to MSBA, Avi and Pam, they flew with the Habib Report and his assessment too. They made the case for more than a roof. A new school and a second are in the proof. Rain gardens, tennis courts, solar PPA, turf fields, HVAC and rebates that pay. Avi mastered construction and getting bonds rated. Saving millions, taxpayers should be elated. Avi speaks few words but goes straight to his work. He solves all the problems. He's never a jerk. Oh, students in so many ways, he will certainly be missed in just a few days. But we all explain as he drives his EV out of sight. Best witches, Avi, you have been just right.
Please.
Thanks, Sarah. I cannot top that. I don't have anything prepared, but I just wanted to tell you how much your friendship has meant to me. You're a collaborative person. You have saved us so many times, both towns, and I'm going to miss you. So can't top any of that, but I can speak from the heart. Everything that's been said is totally accurate and I think the thing that always will be lasting for me, knowing you, as people through my professional career, all the volunteer work I've ever done, the character that you brought forward, the standard that you set and the legacy that you leave is so appreciated. So thank you for everything.
Oh, and Susan Beckman. I was just going to say, we'll help you with all the names after.
I just want to say one more little piece. Maybe we're going to start using him, you know, being Avi.
Is there anyone joining us online or by phone who would like to add to these sentiments in particular? Okay, hearing none. I will just let everyone know that at the end of the meeting, our committee members will each have a chance to express our gratitude to Avi and Avi will have a chance to share anything, any parting shots or thoughts he would like to leave us with. So thank you very much. And at this time, actually, would you like to say anything while these people are here?
I'll just keep it brief and just say the, this job has been really very challenging and fun and varied and so I've really loved it, but the relationships of the people have made it really special in a way I did not expect as a numbers guy. And that's been across towns, boards, inside the community and the teachers, the kids. So I never expected the relationships to be this meaningful to me and so I just want to thank all the people who came out and who've been there over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now to the second portion of our public comment section. If there's anyone joining us online or on the phone who would like to make public comment about one of the agenda items for tonight, please put your name and address in the chat now. Is there anyone in person who would like to follow all that up with an additional public comment about the agenda item?
It's Alan Muniz, I'm from Essex. I have heard many versions of we are not settling for less of an education or reduction in the program. Judging from years of MCAS scores and the state's accountability rating of Essex Elementary, we already are paying for less of an education. Did you know that Essex Elementary's MCAS scores are more comparable to the scores of elementary schools in Gloucester and our student growth percentiles are lower? MCAS scores of Hamilton, Wenham and Ipswich were all higher than Essex's. Student growth percentiles in Hamilton, Wenham, Ipswich and Rockport all surpassed Essex's as well. One school that is knocking it out of the ballpark, Manchester Memorial. So I get it. I totally understand why you would defend what we're already doing. The program already is less than Essex. So what would more money do for our kids? Why would it be okay for Essex to accept the program as is when our kids are not getting an equitable education? Is there a definition of the program? And what does the term level services actually mean? These are keywords I have heard repeatedly, yet they have not been clearly defined. It's a bit like voting on an audit without a scope of work. So I know you understand my dilemma. I think we can all agree, all entities are invested in a high-quality education for all our kids. So I'm just trying to understand why you would propose a budget for anything more than what town partners may afford. Doing so has you ignoring the past instead of learning from it and it makes quite a statement. So how can I be an informed voter and know that Essex Elementary will not get comparable funding as the Manchester Elementary School but equal opportunity? How can I know that the Essex kids will be met and supported in their learning as opposed to some other start line that's not meeting their specific needs? It's only when these questions are answered that I can even begin to make my decision on whether or not to support the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in room?
Thank you, Avi, for your steady hand and stewardship of the district. And thank you all for your services, school committee members. I'm Lindsay Banks, I'm at Forest Street in Manchester. I'm grateful for your hard work on this challenging budget issues. I'm particularly impressed by our Manchester members who are reaching across the aisle and entertaining the requests from the town of Essex. Yet Manchester voted against the audit. Some have tried to cast blame on this committee for that audit vote, but that's incorrect. The voters of Manchester rejected the audit. If the purpose of the audit was to better serve students, I'd be all for it. We have learning needs, particularly identified in Essex. The stated purpose was not to better serve students but to find efficiencies, likely more cuts. The best people to make these decisions are our elected school committee officials, not some third-party consultant. I've appreciated the thoughtful conversation about class sizes and program offerings as the Policy and Program Subcommittee works to find efficiency. Continuing to talk about an audit and using limited school resources to fund it prioritizes the wishes of one town over another. By no means should we be dipping into the school of limited resources to pay for an audit despite the wishes of Manchester voters. In my comments at Manchester's town meeting, I said we should put the money to the students, not an audit. Use it to pay our teachers or instructional coaches. While admirable, your efforts at partnership are not being reciprocated. The audit was proposed to address a perceived lack of transparency, yet the open collaboration meeting requested by this committee is being declined by town leaders. This is the opposite of transparency. Our town leaders need to do better. This committee's role is not to manage either town's finances or spending priorities, it's to center student interests as your primary concern. Spending times in your meetings, nickel and diming every budget line item is prioritizing one town over another and distracting from the students, your core responsibility. We need you all to repeatedly state a commitment to students as your priority and never assume it is implied. We need you to educate town leaders about why the schools need to be funded in the interest of our students. I want to be clear, and I think you know, that beginning a budget conversation with a high watermark of 2.5% growth is unacceptable to Manchester voters. Manchester voters will likely reject any budget that does not prioritize students. We need you all to center students in every meeting, every comment and every conversation you have as a school committee representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online? I don't see anyone having put their names. Okay, with that, we will close public comment. Thank you very much and we will move on to the chairperson's report. I have just a couple of things to report to you, to the board tonight. One is that, and they all happened just in the last few business days. Last Thursday, I met with Pam and we met with Tonzipa from the John Gilfoyle PR firm. We had some, I had some questions in particular about how we respond to some of the conversation happening in the community and newspapers and the social media. And so just to get an idea, I will write that up, this was just last Thursday, so I will write up the, the suggestions he gave for basically a short-term, midterm, long-term messaging ideas for us to move forward with, given that we've been talking about that. So I wrote that up and emailed that out and we can discuss it further on the 19th. It will be an agenda item. And then the other thing is that we've received, I received communication from a community member that I will send out, it's a policy adoption request. So we have a community member who has shared her story by email, has had conversations with administration and is bringing it to us for a policy request to allow sports participation on a case-by-case basis with specific criteria for a student who's not a student at the district. This isn't something that I want us to dive into tonight, but I want us to, I will share this information by email and put it on as an agenda item on the 19th so that we can discuss whether this is something, we can take about then whether this is something that we want to give to the Policy and Program Subcommittee or not. So just so you know, that will be coming, we have received that information and you will be receiving it as well, that came in on the first. And then the final thing is just our school operating protocols as we do each week or each meeting, excuse me. And Anna, you're the last one in the cycle, could you read that one for us?
Attend meetings on time and be well-prepared to discuss agenda items. Members who are unable to attend a meeting shall modify the chair in a timely fashion. Four members required in order for the school committee meeting.
Thank you very much. And that is it for chairperson's report. We do not have a student report tonight, Diego is out. And the consent agenda is pretty small, it's just one set of minutes from the November 21st meeting. There was one change that was made today in one little section. My name and Anna's name have been transposed about representing each town at town meeting, but that's the only change. So I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes from 11:21 with the change as stated. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm abstaining, I somehow missed the note packet.
Okay, so all in favor were, that was, sorry, four in favor, five and one abstaining. So Carrie, thank you. Subcommittee reports, we do not have a facility Subcommittee Report tonight. Collaboration Report, just that after our last meeting, as stated, I did send an email out to all the members of the Collaboration Group. We heard back from one, just, you know, sitting that it was unfortunate, certainly. If there were a public version of it, the person would be amenable to it, but it was just one reply. So that's where things stand there. Negotiations, Kate and Chris.
So negotiations are ongoing. We did have an executive session today to discuss a short update. Other than that, our next meeting is next weekend.
Next fall?
Yeah.
And policy and program update.
I'm going to really condense it. The policy, Subcommittee Met, we discussed and reviewed a proposed reserve policy. It is in the works and we are making progress. We also discussed class size policy and some data that the, that the administration presented to us and that discussion also remains in the works and making some progress.
Do we have any idea of when we can expect a policy draft on either one of those, just so that we can plan for it in the agendas?
I would say that there is probably quicker. I would say after Christmas.
So not before the 12/19? Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm planning the 12/19.
I mean, we're going to have a draft, let's put it that way. But I would say after Christmas might be on the safe side. The other one, I don't know, it might take a little bit longer, depends on some of the additional data, I think we still need to further discuss.
Okay, so all right, so we won't put a date on it at this point?
A lengthier report, but maybe not a full, yeah.
Yeah, that one won't be till the spring.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so but at what point would it be reasonable to get a lengthier report so that we know where things stand? Because as we, as other things come up, we want to understand what, what's on your plate and where we are in progress.
So not to draw this out because Erica did an awesome job trying to convince. Fundamentally, the limitation of what we're able to do right now is that the scheduling system is fixed and if we try to experiment with it, we mess up everybody's systems. So it was in essence, we're kind of waiting until the high school goes through its March student enrollment process to test out some of the questions that we have. So that's really kind of what we're waiting for. That said, there are some ideas on the table, but we, we have intuition about something, but we don't really have a way to test those at the moment.
So maybe at the 12/19 meeting, we could just set a little bit of time to, to understand where you are in the process and what the, what the outcome is intended to be, just so that we're all aware. I know the meetings are taking place, you're meeting, you're discussing things, but so that we have an idea, so that we don't put too much or too little on your plates and we're moving forward. Okay. All right, superintendent's report.
Okay, I will start with just thanking Avi publicly for his partnership and advisory. Partnership has advised his friendship over the past 14 years. It came just after he started and we really, I'm really pleased to hear the public commentary about the work that I see happening every day. He is very much appreciated by his colleagues as well. It will not be the same without you, but you have put us in a good position to carry forward and I will never hear the phrase pivot table in my life without thinking, so, without getting, it's all been said, but just please know and how much I respect your work and how much your partnership has been throughout the years. It's been fun, it has been a lot of fun, a lot of challenges, but a lot of fun. In just some routine business, I just have a couple of updates to share. First, I just want to thank Spalding Education Fund has been resurrected and they kicked off, they kicked off their, their new era with bringing back the Night of Stars and it was a tremendous success on Saturday night. The parking lot was full, the auditorium was almost to capacity and the kid performances were absolutely amazing. So just thank you to everybody. I don't want to name people because if I name people, I'm going to forget someone. But just everyone who had a hand in, in getting that off the ground and making that happen, it was just such an uplifting night and wonderful to see people coming out to support our kids but also our schools. And I know they have a lot of good work planned and support planned for the district. So we're incredibly appreciative and it was a fun night out, so. And school committee, kids were represented and school committee represented well in the audience. So thank everyone who made, I thank you to everyone who made the time to come out. And then just a couple of quick updates, we received a grant from DESI today, so this is late breaking news, and it's a grant that is going to fund a team to look at our arts programming and provide a framework for analysis on that, quite by chance. So sometimes we get the question, you know, what, how do you use, how do you find grants? What do you use them for? And I think the response that we give is always, we're looking for things that are going to promote work that we already have planned. So we have the development of a directorship in our plan. We also know we need to look at and answer some questions and some asks about the program K-12. We also know we need to look at and answer some questions and some asks about the program K-12. And I think this is going to provide us a good opportunity to bring a team together of people who are in the arts, performing in visual, as well as parents and teachers together to kind of study using a framework DESI is providing and give recommendations about where we can go. Heather's going to edit that up and we'll probably have more information as it starts to unfold, but we're super excited about that. And it, and it supports the work at hand. You've heard me talk about the fact that we are in the beginning stages of New England Association of Schools and Colleges accreditation review of our elementary schools. The goal there is to ensure that both schools are on the same playing field, using the same methodology and pedagogy and that we're organized around the same standards. We're in our self-study phase. That's ongoing. We have a delegation of K-12 educators and admins attending a two-day conference in Boston end of this week, sponsored by NEAS. So they can learn more about the work, about what other schools are doing and about the process in general. And then my final update tonight is just on, sorry, to the replacement process of trying to find someone to fill these very big shoes. And we had a very successful interview yesterday with a candidate that we recruited. It's an experienced individual, not at liberty yet to disclose, but I, given our successful interview yesterday, I'll be speaking with the person this week and trying to set up an opportunity next week to host some focus groups like we traditionally do, identify a finalist so that people from this board, general community, the admin team can have a chance to meet, ask questions and assess and provide feedback. If that's successful, then we will be bringing the recommendation hopefully before the holiday. So if you would have asked me last session, if I thought we would be here tonight, no. So fingers crossed, I don't want to jinx it, so I'm just going to leave it there. And then just to follow up on Antonella's question, we're going to try to address level services tonight because that is going to come up again. But there is a program of studies for the elementary school that's an elementary level. So it's common to both schools and curriculum guides that are posted on Heather's curriculum site. We can send the link out. It's a starting point. That shows kind of how both programs are structured the same.
Anyone have questions based on what Pam has reported? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have to take. All right, on to continued business. And I want to know, I, I don't want to delay the budget conversation, but there are a couple of things that if we reorder this, I think we could get them out of the way. Given our, our committee preparation for it. So if we could start just by addressing the school committee length topic, I know I sent out an email today so people could understand what to expect about how to do this. It shouldn't take too long. So just to introduce the issue, in September, we decided at our September 5th meeting, given that we, we like to have conversation and explore things in great depth, but it is getting quite lengthy in terms of meetings. And we decided unanimously at that time to set a meeting end time at 9:00 PM. Of course, as, as we move through the meetings, sometimes that's more difficult than others. And so we had a really full agenda two meetings ago, or two or three meetings ago, that required us to go a little bit longer, two meetings ago, 11:07. And then the last meeting, we had a hard end for, for one member, based on the expectation that we would be attempting to end at nine o'clock. So I did receive feedback from a couple of members by email. This is the decision that we had made in December. I see value in making a decision and sticking to it. I also see value in buying something and then course correcting if necessary. So if someone would like to make a motion to, to make a change now is the time.
To change to what?
Anything. So we, we currently have an understanding and norm for our group that we will end our meetings at nine o'clock. Of course, recognizing that we end by motion to adjourn. And if somebody moves to extend the meeting, that would be an option. But right now, nine o'clock is our target end time. After the last meeting, got some more feedback. So if anyone wants to do this now in public meeting is the time to make a motion to, to have a change.
I, I know this is out of Robert's rules, but it seems like it might benefit us to discuss for a minute before we move for something.
For tonight, we have enough on our plate and I did give at least a little bit of advanced warning that if we want to get into discussion, let's just make a motion and then we can get into discussion about it.
I make a motion, we attempt to try to finish the meeting at nine with the process to lay out during the discussion. Well, this is long. Maybe this is not okay.
Make a motion at nine o'clock is a target.
Yes, it's a target. But if we were to, we should determine the actual end time around nine o'clock by vote. To continue or not.
So that's, that's effectively what we have in place. We have a target end time of 9:00 PM. And if anyone makes a motion at that time to adjourn, then we vote on adjourning. Or if someone makes a motion at nine to extend the meeting, say, make a motion to extend the meeting 30 minutes, then that's what we do. So if, if what we want to do is keep nine o'clock as a target with the understanding that if we're in the middle of something, someone can make a motion to extend it, then that's right where we are right now and we don't need to make a change.
I think the challenge is last meeting felt personal for anybody, any of us to have said motion to extend. It would have felt in light of the fact that a member was counting on it, it would have felt personal. And I think we need to remove that from our debate. We all knew going into last meeting that one member had to leave. And therefore, even though I think a number of us felt like we were mid-conversation, it also felt disrespectful to extend the meeting. So my own, I guess my goal would be if we're going to go with that as an objective, that somebody says, I moved to extend the meeting, then we all have to understand going into it that that's not a personal judgment on anybody who has to leave for any particular reason. Because I think that's how it felt last meeting.
Okay, so if that's the case, then what I'm hearing is we would just like to reiterate that when we work by motion, it's not personal. And we move forward with our, with our target of nine o'clock as is. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for saying the word. Thank you. Okay, then we will move forward with that. And then the second thing was the school committee goals, which Jake had sent to us, I think, November 3rd, some, quite some time ago, and we haven't addressed. So now is the time to take a look, or you should have taken a look already, but to determine whether or not we wish to address these goals, accept these goals as drafted. So is there a motion?
So if I drafted them, I'll propose that we accept these two goals, one around academic excellence and one around budget as drafted for our consideration.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion.
So are we saying that we want to add this to, to the existing 2023 goal? Or are we just to have?
No, these are, these are the new goals based on the workshop that we did and the conversation that we had.
So we're trying to say that we are finalizing at least two goals for now.
Correct. So we'll, we'll do, so that was a clarifying question. Anyone else with a clarifying question about this?
Let me, let me just clarify what I did so that people understand. So we had a workshop essentially around goals. And all I did was try to capture the essence of that conversation. And the biggest change for us is probably we wanted to make it basically a SMARTboard, right? We wanted to make it somewhat measurable. So these are substantively longer than any goal we've ever had in the past, yeet four bullets under each goal because of it. But they reflect that conversation and I hope I didn't interpret through my own mind and do this.
Any other clarifying questions? Okay, if there's no further clarifying questions, then we'll take one round of comments before evoke. So I will begin. I, I personally think that we have enough to be getting on with with just the budget one and, and all of the sub, the, the subbullets under it. I do appreciate the work here. But I think there are enough things that are important to our committee that they keep coming up in conversation in that academic excellence goal that I am in support of adopting these as drafted. Going around.
I would recommend not because I do think that this is the draft as we all know. And I think that we, I wouldn't, I, I don't see why we need to vote to kind of lock this down when we haven't finished the entire discussion yet. Because usually when we're looking at the goals, we need to make sure that it's comprehensively done, then we can finalize things. So I don't, I don't see why we need to finalize the two before we finish the whole thing.
Okay, that's your comment. Okay, go ahead, Erica. No comment. John?
Nothing really to add.
Okay, did you want to add anything?
I'll just say, I, I hear you, Anna, that, you know, this is not the full picture of goals that we need, but these are two substantive goals that we need to move forward on. So I would say we'll just get two on the table. Good.
All in favor? Any opposed? That's supported to it, Carrie. So we will begin with these two goals. Thank you for your work, Jake. Doesn't mean it's the end, but it's certainly a start for us. And with that, I don't wish to reorder the continued discussion of evaluation of the budget related suggestions. I think that would be a good thing for us to, we tend for at the end, after we turn the time over to Avi and Pam for a fiscal year 25 tentative budget presentation and discussion. So looking at the time, knowing that we wish to end by nine, we want to make sure that we do leave enough time. If we can keep this to an hour and a half, finish by 8:15, that'll leave us half an hour for the continued discussion of the, of boards meeting items that we need to make some decisions on. And then closing with our comments broadly. So we'll shoot for ending, for wrapping this up at 8:15 if possible, by 8:15. All right. Like to start with just a framing and an overview, please. That's acceptable, please. And there's nothing substantive in here that we need to worry, that there's nothing actionable. It's just a, a couple of thoughts to get the conversation started. And, and help us be clear on what this is and what it isn't and where we are in this process. So hopefully this works. It's a bit small. Let me jump up. Wrong document. This is.
Pam, if we're following along, is it the same as what we have received? This part will be, and I think we should work from the packet on the substantive pieces of the, of the preview. But I, I have a different, I just have a couple of bullet points I wanted to share with everybody as a starting point, so. And I have a hard copy of substantive pieces. If you guys want to pass this or I'm talking. So just, we use this phrase tentative budget and it comes up every year. And we've tried to put some report pieces in there this year to help provide background. But I think it's important that we just start with a quick overview of what we're trying, why we do this and what we're trying to achieve. So the tentative budget, the intention here is in addition to being required, a required report by the regional agreement. The intent here is to give a preliminary look at what the key drivers are doing to our budget outlook for FY25. This is not a full budget. This is not a recommended budget. This is a progress report of where we are in the budget bill with the intent of giving an early look to all important stakeholders as to where this may be going. It accounts for things like early numbers on healthcare, which tend, tend to be high. We're lucky this year, we have a settled contract, so we have a locked in number that's going to drive the budget. We'll talk a little bit about that. We have a very early district projection. Those are the big pieces. That's 80% of the budget right there. So we want to give everybody a sense of if we carry the budget forward, level services, meaning the same scope, the same program, the same staffing levels next year as this year, with these pieces that we have early assumptions on, this is what we would be looking like. That's why we tend to call it a high watermark. But these discussions are what will inform the recommended budget that comes in January. So we don't have to go down every single budget line tonight. We don't have to decide what's a good idea to add and what's not a good idea to add, or figure out how to solve a potential gap. What we need from you tonight is a sense of where do you want, where do you want us to go? Where does the public want us to go? We'll get some feedback on that next week. So we can have that as information to build a recommendation coming forward. And that's typically comes to you in January. So just a very quick overview, at this time, the budget's built to be forward, carry forward to level services. I'll defer to you. If you prefer carry forward, if you prefer level service, I'm agnostic on which term we use. Essentially, all it's trying to communicate is we are making no substantive changes. We haven't added staff. We haven't subtracted staff. We haven't added a new department at the high school. We haven't put a STEM program into the elementary. There's no substantive change to what we're doing. That doesn't mean that teachers aren't changing class assignments. We may not reshuffle the deck and put somebody in a different school or use our resources wisely and efficiently from year to year to achieve things. It just means we're not really adding anything new and we're not producing our staff. We're not outsourcing a new division. Anything like that, which if we knew at this time would show up here. But at this point, we are just carrying forward with how we're doing business now. What we have in this year's tentative budget, and we honestly did stop doing it a few years back because we were going right to the cutting in the initial budget, is we have, we did hear the feedback from you and principals did submit staffing requests and capital requests for next year. Those are not included in the tentative budget. Those are included in a summary report with a summary of cost, summary of potential offsets and a tally of how much capital reserves it would take to do all of the projects on the five-year plan and address the smaller items new, new to the principals, but they felt were urgent enough to put forward. There's a summary cost of what all of those items together would be. And we'll talk a little bit about that as we go through the packet. The staffing requests, they do, they support either new needs or standing goals in the, in the strategic and school improvement plans. And as I just said, the capital requests are representative of either long-term planning or more immediate need. This is a little very easy chart to frame our thinking around the, sorry, to frame our thinking around the budget. So if the tentative budget, tentative budget is to carry forward level services, what we're seeing, very high view, is that to maintain what we have this year, even if we include some revenue from reserves, some additional school choice funding and some OPEB that we talked about in the initial assumptions, we're looking at a 3.4% increase total budget over last year for 30 million, two. And this is just our spectrum. This is what we're trying to get a ballpark, getting, trying to get a sense of tonight is where are we in the ballpark? Is the committee feeling like this, do, do you know yet? Do you know if the conditions this year are pushing us more toward the left, toward trying to come up with a two and a half cap? And the, you know, the charge from the committee may be, how much of a, you know, what's the best program you can do on the left-hand side of the spectrum? Or you may be all in and saying, you know, no, I think we're really comfortable. The, the requests look reasonable. I know enough now. Drive it to that, provide more backup, provide more narrative so we can make a clearer decision in January. So this is just to say tonight, we're trying to figure out where we are on this spectrum. So when we come with the recommended budget, it's a little bit closer. It may not be on the money, but it's closer to what the collective will of this group is and closer to something that may gain support without five iterations in January and February. So that being said, I think if we want to work from the packet for the remainder, that will be the easiest way to move through things. Stop sharing this. I'll put it up for the audience. I don't know that it's going to be that helpful because it is kind of small in some areas, but it'll all be posted online tomorrow. And the work here is really to process with the committee. Where is my tentative budget? There it is. So as we do ceremonially, you'll have to listen to me for a couple of months, but tonight, why don't we let Avi take us through some of the financial assumptions that are in his memo and then I can walk you through the summary chart that I put together in an attempt to make it simple, but I'm not sure that it did. We, we can take feedback on that as we go through it.
I'll put this up and Avi?
Sure. Well, you know, I don't need to read what's in the memo, so I'm going to keep.
Sure. Well, you know, I don't need to read what's in the memo, so I'm going to keep it extremely high level. With the current parameters that Pam laid out, we're looking at a spending increase of three point four percent. Very much in that kind of spot of where we tend to be on a multi-year basis. And that breaks down, that's a. A number thirty million, two hundred fifty eight thousand dollars. The personnel costs are looking to be up three point four one percent. So really, there's not a lot of differential between the operating and the personnel. Because they're both growing around the same as the average. The only asterisk to that is. The operating expense is typically in healthcare where we see the offset from revenues from school choice fund. Prior to, if we hadn't changed anything, we'd be up at four point two one percent of operating expenses. But this budget does include an assumption that. Revenue, annual recurring revenue from school choice kids would be increased. To five hundred thousand dollars from four hundred thousand in the twenty four budget. So. That would bring the operating expense increase from four point two one with that offset down to three point. Goal one right in line with personnel group. So that's hundred thousand dollars, five thousand dollars per student. That's an assumption. Twenty additional students in the district attend. Keeping things nice and simple, it works out this year that. Non-town revenues are in the budget are such that the assessments are expected to go right around the same level of spending. So current numbers three point four five percent. Increase in assessments to the town. As I said, spending three point four two assessments, three point four five. And these numbers are really right in the sweet spot of where we try to be. Our goal is always to have stability. And predictability, and so I think that we're kind of there right now. We know that we've seen apportionment be a challenge. I. Past couple of years tried to run a draft apportionment. Apportionment doesn't get finalized until after the budget is adopted in February. Because the spending categories will change the mix between instructional and non-instructural. It's one of the inputs flows that change. Where the costs go, but what we're seeing with this draft budget is a, the three point four five increase. In total assessments works out to two point three five for Manchester and five point three one percent for Essex. And again, the main input there, in addition to the categories, really is primarily enrollment, which makes up about half of the formula. And the Essex side enrollment has been stable. The Manchester enrollment has decreased about three percent. And so we know also that because it's a three-year running average. Even if there were no changes and both were stable, we'd be still absorbing increases on the Essex side from prior years. So that. Change while not welcome for anybody because it creates some imbalance and problems as we know. Is not really unexpected. So. That's the highlights there, and I think the only other item that's really kind of major on the big picture revenue side. Is that just as we had committed. Revenue from reserves, excess and deficiency funds last year, two hundred eighty seven thousand. That was the compromised budget number. We've upped that slightly to three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And so that's one of the assumptions as well. In, in this budget. Moving very quickly to just some of two or three of the high-level points on. Where the spending categories are, I won't belabor this much more. On the personnel side, I mentioned that the pool costs are about three point four few percent. The non-teachers association tool, two point five percent cost of living adjustment, just like we've had for several years running. The teachers association contract has already been finalized. It's got a two point two five percent cost of living adjustment. But there's always going to be step and column moves as well, and the average growth is estimated at four percent. So we have held stipends at zero percent. Those were not negotiated of any increase. And then benefits is the next biggest cost after personnel. And we've talked at the last meeting about the fourteen and a half percent increase. That's the preliminary number from the broker. They have indicated that they believe it could come down. They also said we should watch the month by month. We talked about the fact that maybe, you know, nine percent might be kind of a, you know, a potential place to go. That's up to the school committee if they want to bring the number down now or wait for more data to come in as additional months of claims come in. We have seen. Our general claims are a little bit up and our large losses which go through your reinsurance policy are, I would say noticeably up. And. You know. The last time we had a profile like this, that. With large losses being a big issue, it did turn into a worsening situation over time. I have no reason to believe that that would be the case, and I don't want to. Suggest that. I just want to say we have seen situations where increasing number of months of data has yielded a problem. And that was fiscal eighteen where we got hit with the twenty eight percent increase. So nobody is predicting that now. I don't want to say that. I just, my point is. We're at fourteen and a half percent by advice, nine percent could happen, but with rising claims, we have to be careful to make sure. That we have a little bit more data. That would be my suggestion to just be cautious. And we talked about the amount of money for every point, which I can pull up in a second. I don't have it off the top of my head. Importantly. Forty-four, thank you. New business manager, right? Got me covered. Thank you. And we did not, I think this has come up a lot. We always. Do our budget for health insurance based off of the current year actual, not off of the budget. So when we say it's a fourteen and a half percent, it's based off of where we're seeing the numbers for this year coming in. So having done our budget to actual in November. We're building off of those actual numbers, not based off of the budget. So we really, any bit of savings we can get, we. Load that right through the budget so we're not building an unnecessarily inflated budget. There is a suggestion and an inclusion in here of offsetting. Our health insurance by hundred fifty thousand dollars by using some funds that have been gathering in the OPEB trust. You know, if you ask an actuary, they would say that isn't something you would use right away, but. Kind of moving from the actuarial world into the real world at four point eight million dollar trust fund where we've been putting money in on a disciplined basis. In response really to good, prudent practice, but also comments from taxpayers over the years, if this is a liability that they don't want to send. They don't want to send them a separate bill for. You know, we've built that up to four point eight million. I think a hundred fifty thousand use of that is certainly within the realms of reasonable. That's a personal opinion. And then out of district, the numbers are up. Four point eight percent. The total category there and. You know, we continue to benefit from rising circuit breaker reimburseers from the state, especially as we've seen more of our tuitions be at the higher level because the lower cost ones are. In district and kids aren't really going out. We tried to make those increases. Same. So whatever we think the total cost will be, that's what we're passing on to the budget. We're using the circuit breaker funds. To help us there and we are seeing some savings in other areas of special education budget and contracted services. You may remember from the vouchers last year, we had some. Leave costs that were expensive and getting substitutes for some of our related services professionals, which are not people you can hire mid-year for a short-term basis. That cost is going to bring, bring us down to the twenty-five budget. And then the last item I think worth mentioning is that in the maintenance side, we are. Not surprisingly continuing to see rising costs as you look at the actual trajectory. Not skyrocketing, but definitely increasing stably at Essex Elementary as that building continues to age and to a lesser extent at this building as well. We're now. You know, fourteen years in and, you know, thankfully we have a very proactive facilities department. I think we're just trying to keep track of what we've seen on the trend. So. Those costs are going up slightly above average. But we are seeing a little bit of a curve bending on utilities. We had a huge spike in our fiscal twenty-three budget allocation. We ended up not needing all of it, but a lot of it. So even with some of the end-of-year savings, it was savings off of a greatly increased number. So we're bringing that down a little bit this year. We will have a full year of the higher rates, but seeing some of the savings, we, we brought that down. Slightly in the coming year. It's something we just have to watch. I think we'll know more once we get through. The February through March timeframe this year, how that's going. There's not a lot we can really predict at this point. Those are really the high-level summaries of costs and cost areas. There is a conversation in the packet about our. Longer-term facilities liabilities, and that's an important topic that we don't lose sight of, but for now, we'll just keep it to the operating budget and take that up later.
So those who are verbal processors. Good, but we're hearing that we need to work on communicating a little bit, so we're going to try it in a different way and we'll call this some Pam map. What we're trying to communicate is this, I'll be posted tomorrow, but for those who have it in front of you and visiting packet over the weekend. All of that is to say, if I could simplify our budget for everybody. Up here, this is what it costs to roll forward next year for three point four million dollars. This is our large category new revenue. So what's not in here is athletic fees. But athletic fees, even if we increase them ten percent, we're probably looking at twenty to thirty thousand dollars more. And that goes right to athletics, so it's not going to get redistributed somewhere else. Big picture, chapter seventy funding, chapter seventy funding, we're hold harmless because we are demographically declining. Sixty dollars per student would be our best. Thirty dollars is also for seventy thousand. We're going to get Medicaid reimbursement at thirty thousand. This is one of our large category increases. We're at, we're going to attempt to add school choice. Students for a hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue. We are going to discuss and investigate. Procon on school choice as we go forward. I don't think we need to do that tonight. If we don't have that revenue, we'll have to solve for that problem later on. We're going to continue to keep reserves in, as he said. It was at two eighty-seven last year. We're going to go up to three fifty, sixty thousand dollar increase. That is all of our external revenue other than town revenues. Aside from grants, but grants are accounted for completely separately. Positions that are paid through grants are accounted for in those grants. They don't appear in this budget. Looking at the revenues that we have and what it will take to meet level services, we've got basically three categories. That put us into the three point four spending. If you take a total of all our other expenditure lines not appearing on this page, they're all, they're collectively going down thirty four thousand dollars. What drives the budget every year? Why the budget exceeds two and a half every year is your personnel cost combined with a healthcare cost and your out-of-district. Expenses. Alone, five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. To carry all personnel forward with the majority of it being in the teacher's contract of five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Okay, so when we start to look at these other lines, they are very small in comparison to our main category. Health insurance, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That's your million-dollar growth. Right here in these two categories. Out of district, we are lucky that we do have the circuit breaker. The circuit breaker is a state funding mechanism for expensive out-of-district placements. It's money direct in to offset that cost. We carry everything else. We're doing okay. We're only going up forty-seven thousand dollars as of today. That could change. In a heartbeat. This is the one we have the hardest time controlling for. Not projecting, we can project based on the students we have and students we don't have currently or may enter our system or. A need that may emerge that isn't quite on our radar screen yet. So when we're trying to figure out, why is our budget so expensive? Why does it grow faster than two and a half percent? Because we pay health, we pay wages and we pay healthcare at a cost that exceeds two and a half percent. So when we're looking at that spectrum, the way to get to two and a half. Is to reduce in the category that is costing us the most money. So essentially, we are in a position where we're trying to reduce the number of staff. So we can afford to pay the staff that we have. Why we tend to look in that category is because that's what's driving the cost up. Most of the others are nearly fixed or controlled at a two and a half percent growth rate by design. So this is the simplification of the budget. Sure, there are, there are many things we can look at in here to find. Savings and create savings. We aren't going to find five hundred thousand dollars in savings in these other lines in the budget. So this is as simple as we can paint a picture. What I also tried to do for you. Is just paint a couple of big, big brush scenarios of. What the implication is on some of our wants. So the orange band is our tentative budget, our carry forward. This is carry forward. Another thing I'm trying to, to work on here is. There's our total budget and then sometimes we get stuck in the assessment conversation, which I think can be very confusing for people. Our total budget growth at level services is three point four two. It, it doesn't always equate to what the assessment growth is. The assessment growth is the cost to towns. For taxpayer funding after we reduce all of those other revenue streams that come in. So just staying at level services, that's in the middle. This is just a chart representation of the spectrum. If you read through the request of staffing and capital and we added that in after accounting for potential savings, efficiencies and offsets to drive the cost down. You're still looking at another three hundred thousand dollars added to the total budget growth for four and a half percent. To get to two and a half percent, we're coming down about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So those would have to be either direct cuts, very good news on healthcare. Could get us to that reduction. I think forty-four thousand per point, five points gets you almost there. It might mean foregoing things. That are in the director and principal ad requests. Or it might do, mean doing only the things we could offset internally. So we're not really sure how we would get here yet. There are a couple of variables that could change to help us out. But this is just a look at total budget impact of the two ends of the spectrum and then. Assessment impact for those who want to follow that in particular, but I do think we can confuse people if we start jumping in between. Because sometimes it sounds like if we just talk about this. You would think our budget was twenty-six million dollars, but our budget's really thirty million dollars. So I think that is kind of the big picture there. And if you want to do a quick run through what some of the requests are. So I was making charts. Again, there will be more backup and explanation and principal narratives around these pieces, but the early look at what they're looking for. Really comes into two categories. It's staff either. Reallocated from other locations in the district or new additions to the staff, which we can try to offset with other, other pieces. So the middle school is looking to put back world language and we think we can achieve that. By making a reduction in a reallocation at the high school. So that's really shifting a person from one place to another, and I, and I think we've done a lot of this over the years. We've never really presented it this way, so if it's confusing, let me know, but I think we're just trying to help. You understand some of the thinking that goes on to making, goes into making it all work. So middle school, I'm sorry, high school is going to look at adding an ACE teacher. That's going to be paid for through tuition in. You've heard us talk sometimes that some of our specialized programs, this is a severe special needs program at the high school. We'll have requests from other districts who. Are looking for something other than a full out-of-district placement and they're willing to pay tuition for kids to attend. Programs that we offer that are considered high quality. That's the case with ACE. We have some tuition in students. We need to add a teacher because we have students coming through the pipeline, so enrollment is growing in that program. So we're going to use that tuition in a multi-year format to offset the cost of a teacher added to that program. So. We're tracking it here, but there's really no cost. It's coming from tuition and the world language teacher, it's on the high school as a reduction. It's going to go to the middle school to. To resource sixth grade world language book better. Middle school's looking for a learning center teacher. That's with an intervention lens, so I could say that's. Strategic in district and school improvement plans indirectly, but more immediately a response. To. Data concerns, both the MCAS, but also some of what they're seeing in their regular i-ready work in an interest in trying to provide some additional supports. That way, they would like a teaching assistant for the library. We're on a multi-year path to reimagine the library, so before we're adding actual librarian staff back. I think what we're trying to do is acknowledge that. We have a high school model that works, but the model doesn't work for the middle school necessarily, so how can we? Resource them so that they can provide more opportunity for middle school kids to utilize the library. I think some of it will be a negotiation between the two principals on how it might work out and what the model might, might look like, but we felt that to keep. More of a library feel unless of just a study learning commons field that in addition, staff member addition at the middle school would be helpful. Then just moving to Essex and Memorial. The math interventionist, we previewed this in our budget at the end of last year. We have ESER, we've been carrying a math interventionist on the ESER grant, so one of our. COVID responses was to add an additional math specialist to focus particularly on Essex. Technically, all of our interventionists are district wide and are split based on. Case load need. So the three times a year they do assessments of students and based on where the needs are, they're supposed to be assigning the staff to address the need. So technically they're split between the two. Long story short on this, the grant is expiring. We need to move the person onto the regular budget or we would lose the person. But we have some offsets in other areas. That can shoulder some of the burden of bringing them back in. New additions are instructional coaches, one in math, one in ELA to be shared between the two elementary schools. And these were referenced in their school. In their MCAS presentations, it will become additions of their school improvement plan. These would be individuals that actually are more professional development oriented than they are student support oriented. And the goal there is to have embedded professional development to work on continual training of teachers to become. Current, more current and effective with the outcomes and the interventions. That we're seeking to make improvements in. So it's no indictment on what we're doing now. It's just a way to help us build capacity toward fulfilling both our strategic goals and some of our achievement goals. I'm not going to take you through all the small. Capital asks things like, but you might be asking yourself, why is, why are walkie talkies on here? It's only $8,000. They still make those. And we have some dead spots in the middle and they use them for recess and things like that. The reason why something that might appear that small is on here is because our expense budgets for the schools are very tight. So something like an $8,000 ad, they don't have the capacity to move $8,000, to find $8,000 in other lines to fund walkie talkies in one year. So they're just accounted for here. And then. I think you can see on the, the other notable one is a teaching assistant. And I did speak to both principals about this and we were in agreement. The efficiency we found in sharing, so when we talk about cuts made in the attrition cuts that you don't see. So over the years, as we retired a librarian at Essex, we moved to a shared position. Because the teaching component of librarian is a 1.0 position. And we do break down to about 60, 40 if you take the sections in time. So. There was no loss in terms of program there, but there is a lot of loss when we're learning in terms of flexibility. So all the specialists are shared, 60, 40 for teaching mode. They're at memorial 60% of the time. There's no impact on students for the content and the instruction that they're receiving. But the principal is feeling that there are less hands in the building to assist with the daily management of things. So things like a duty schedule, which are not necessarily. Going, going to have an impact on student outcomes in the classroom, but just in terms of general management of the building. And access in this, in this case to the library, we think it would be helpful to have that extra pair of hands offsetting. So if the librarian's on one site, we'd have somebody in the library at the other site to at least receive students, help with checkouts, help teachers if they want to use it as a resource. And again, I, if we start to seed it a bit and put some, put the teaching assistants in now to assist with the. Fourth level of intervention, so to speak, in reviving the program, there's some seed money there too. That could roll into a formal position later on down the line. But I think the immediate need in both locations is access and building support. Then you're going to see just a point to add an occupational therapy for special education and a reduction. There's going to be a planned reorganization, reallocation of resources that is going to help us fund some of the other physician ads that we've. That we've identified. Curriculum instruction and facilities are primarily capital asks. I think the big one that we're hoping to achieve this year, and these are going to come. Though I know sometimes there's a conversation around. Whatever we end up calling it, yeah, school choice reserves, which we see as capital reserves. That there's no, it's been said that there's no plan for that money, but I would argue that there's been a longstanding plan of capital outlays for that money. Can look at the five year capital plan and the intent there was to first use stabilization. Which was funded through the interest income from the memorial school. Loan. And then use school choice to fund these investments in, in the district because we don't have capacity in the operating budget to take these on either directly. Or in lease format, which is what we've done with our. Suits of computers. So the, the big project we'd like to do, which has been deferred since, deferred from actually a couple of years, but. On the, on the program, it's been deferred this year is the interactive whiteboard replacement at the high school. The whiteboards are. From 2009, when the building came into being, they're past their useful life, they're past their, they're not current any longer. And they rely on the projector technology, whereas. All the elementary schools have a version of the board that's in front of us here. These are demo boards that we're using throughout the district. So. Instead of replacing the two pieces, the goal would be to replace all the classrooms with something similar to this. And that would be an outlay from. School choice reserves. History and social science curriculum materials, it's part of the review process and some supplemental writing curriculum. We've included the smaller ones as potential budget adds for curriculum. I think we do need to build those budget lines a bit. Because these will be recurring costs over the years, not necessarily the same subject area, but. Initial materials investments. When we do a curriculum purchase. The initial purchase is taken on by the curriculum office and then in the second year, the maintenance of the materials is. Pushed into the two school budgets or the, the school budget. Which is being purchased. And then finally we have the facilities and I think you can probably read the report yourself, but the highlights there, I think Avi, Avi did mention the middle high school and I want to put a plug in. Essex is top priority right now and all eyes are on it. We are eagerly awaiting. A response from MSBA, hopefully within the next week or two, we're going to know if we're, we're going to be considered for the pipeline. I feel like we have a very active plan there and we're aware of what we'll need to do if we aren't successful getting into the pipeline. I want to start sounding the alarm on this building. They're not nice to do's, they're must do's if we want to stay ahead of it. We're pushing up to 15 years on this building. So we're, we're, you know. In 2034, we're going to be at half life, which will be roofs and systems. I think we want to do everything we can to have preventative maintenance, maintenance plans in place. Our team does a great job. It's tracked. It's known to us. What, what they don't have is the guaranteed funding. Again, I, we have always looked to the reserves as being the resource to use mindfully and systematically to support these investments in the school. But I think this is a building that's too big to get behind on. And it's a building that houses half of the, more than half of the district. So if something goes wrong here, it has the biggest implication it possibly can. It's not going to happen in the short term. It's more. Let's be proactive here and not put it off because it feels like something that's not too immediate to do. Again, Essex is front and center. We have multiple pathways to address. Either completely or piecemeal until we can get a large project there. I just don't want this one to fall off the list. So in total, if we take all of the asks, we've got a million dollars in new asks. We've found offsets and allocations that will reduce that. By 313,000 for kind of our staffing and, and operating budget implication and the reserve request is about 426 on its own. So if we were to do the staffing pieces. All of them, we would be looking at about $300,000. And we can look at variation for other things as we go forward with the budget iterations, but I'll leave it at that for now. So. That's what's going into the initial. Into the preliminary budget and into the projections. Are there other aspects of the reports that you wanted to go through? Is it better that we just turn to questions and, and reference them as they come up?
Could you, could you just give us a little walkthrough on the projection? Because that's probably going to be a question that comes up is, and have it right on the next page.
Oh, I forgot about this. Yes, thank you. This is, you know, stamp it draft, stamp it current thinking, but when asked to think about, you know. What do you, what do you see the needs coming at us in the next couple of years? This is. Our collective response as a leadership team. We have everything that I walked you through on page one is indicated in FY25. Right now we're projecting, we'll have a plan for the librarian. In FY26. I would argue that this could also be revised if we, I'm already behind. I was hoping to have a, a library task force up and running beginning in November. I've had a couple of surprises. We're going to try for the first of the year. Realistically, you know, January to November, we could have something for tentative budget next year. I think what our caution there is. We know we need something, but we don't all know what we want it to be. So how can we use collective thinking to kind of, to redesign and then make sure we're hiring? The right. Profile. And that we're all in agreement on what we're trying to do with it. And I think, you know, the room we're sitting in is a good example of, there was a learning commons. Concept and philosophy that was studied and implemented. And when it got off the ground. It was great, but then players changed and the idea was not kept alive. So we are the, we're at the situation we're at now. I think we just want to be mindful and when we're spending money that we're doing it in a way that's thoughtful. I think the same is true for performing arts coordinator, which is out in FY27 and. The world language teacher at the elementary. Which we would be looking at potentially for FY26. We, we're hoping, we presented them as potential reductions at the time because we thought there were improvements that could be made to the program. So again, we'd like the improvements to be made. Right now I know Heather's working with the department chair for world language to look at. Ensuring that a curriculum is aligned to the current standards. And thinking about how the program at the middle school could be better implemented when we bring it back. So when we have that plan, we're hoping 26 might be the year. We would look to add back the elementary world language teacher at that point.
That is very helpful.
The only other notable on this list is, and I italicized it, put an asterisk and put a footnote to say that. We're, we're watching enrollment at memorial school. We're not there yet. But there's a potential that next year, year after, we could be looking to add back, start add back, starting to add back teachers if necessary. So we could be at this point next year and that can move over a column because the numbers are looking okay, or we could be seriously considering it.
All right. So with all that then, why don't we do a round of questions? And remembering, so we will have opportunities to dive deep into every line item and that sort of thing and ask those questions, but with the task. That you have asked for us tonight, which is to getting at where, which direction are we interested in that center, the left, the right on that spectrum? Let's make sure our questions are supporting our understanding so that we can get to that information. So let's do questions first. Listen to all our questions and answers and then we'll do a round or two of comments to get you to your. Think so if we can, we have maybe half an hour or so for questions. So we just start by going around?
I don't have any questions at this point. It was pretty straightforward and a really good presentation. It's clear that what the primary drivers are. You know, we are pretty intense.
Jake, do you have any questions?
So. I guess a little bit of framing of my thinking before to contextualize the question. So one, so Pam, I want to thank you because I know this is a lot of detail for this early in the process, but it helps me to. Kind of see the program better than I've ever seen in the past. So thank you. And to me. What's frustrated me about this conversation for so long is that we start with the percent. And we never talk about the program. So what I've been trying to do. Is. Take the, the program and the necessary budget would meet the program and then try to ask, how do we get to a percent that works? And so for me. Being able to look at the program needs. You know, is where I wanted to start and you've given me some information to do that. To me, the requests. Do not feel like a wish list. They feel like you are responding to. Our needs. Or, or school needs and our request for this plan. That said, we need to continue to look critically at where we can find efficiencies. And I think you've. One of the challenges of using the level services language is that. It implies nothing is changing, but you've actually showed us that things are. Changing. You, you've identified a couple of places where. Reallocation could happen, that kind of thing, right? So it's not just to. Keep everything the same and add on, right? It's, it's rethinking part of it too. So we need to continue that work and we're doing some of that in the policy group and all that. To me. You know, if, if I buy into, and I do buy into a number of the requests because I think they are necessary requests for students. And programs. I have a quite, I have questions about a number of them, but that's a level of detail we can get into later elsewhere. But assuming that we do support some of those, that does imply that, you know, the budget is going to be. At the level services budget or maybe even a little bit more. Then the question becomes, how do we fund that? And we have to take then and down the, into consideration the town context. So to me, the question is, how much reserves? Are we willing to or able to? Put to the budget in order to keep the assessment down, yet still. Need and fulfill a program need. Wherever we live in. The second question becomes then, what is a reasonable student choice number to help offset some of that? And are we contributing to the memorial growth by doing that? You know, I don't want to trigger new staff because of, of the school choice. Cause the. You know, $5,000, not even a quarter of what per pupil spending is, right? So to me, it comes down to this question of how much reserves are we willing and able to commit? And that is not just a this year question. That is a next couple of years question that we have to consider too. So. To me, having the three year projection would help. And a better sense of where we are or expect to be with reserves.
Just a quick, quick note on school choice. I think I may have said it when we talked assumptions, but I didn't say it tonight. School choice would all be targeted at six, 10, grade six or 10. Not the, the elementary doesn't have the capacity for the. And we can, we'll, we'll do the reserve work.
Did you have any questions for? What information you need to know and where you fall along this spectrum?
I don't know. I'm not sure if it's. In. You know, it's a specific question that could be answered at this point, but. You know. Of course, schools that we operate, right? The, you know, high school, middle school. Memorial and Essex Elementary. Just on the high level numbers, when I look at this, I know that Essex Elementary is the most expensive school that we run from an operational budget like perspective. But I don't really see where that is. I mean, I guess a, a little bit just on the teacher side. I didn't, didn't know if I was just. Missing something or.
On staffing?
Yeah, I mean, I guess staffing side. When I say most expensive, I mean like cost per student, right? High school is, has, you know, it's many more students, right? Obviously it costs more to operate high school than any of our.
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. I guess we'll have to wait over time. And it helps us to understand how per pupil is achieved and where it helps us as a benchmark and where it doesn't. So the per pupil of high school will likely be. There's more students. But there's more staff. But at times it comes in lower than the two elementary schools because the elementary schools have. Sizable staff, but smaller population and more fixed cost for the number of kids that are there. So we do get a report on that. We can run it to look. At in reality, what the cost of each, right, each goal length is. When we set up our budget, we have a per pupil allocation that goes to expenditure side. It doesn't impact. Personnel allocation, but when you supply them for books and materials and you'll see their budgets, their budget pages in, in the next iteration of the budget. That's all done using a state formula based allocation of per head. per student cost. So Essex will have the fewest students, so it's going to have a slightly smaller expenditure budget. But that doesn't mean we're spending less on Essex. We're spending the same amount per student in Essex for supplies and materials. We're spending the same per student for the cost of the teacher because teacher salaries are flat, but they'll have fewer teachers in that building because there are fewer students. So it might, it might drive the per pupil down, but their fixed cost could drive it up. Long story short, it's hard to do back of the envelope, but we can pull that. There's, there's a state report, I think, on that.
And I'm just asking, like, I know you've gotten, I've gotten questions from the E and D too, especially this year around scores. And one of the things we can, and have all over as a school committee is funding, which directly correlates to resources for students. Yep. So I was just curious because I don't necessarily see that and I don't know if, you know, I know we're at a point now, we're pretty far down the path, but should there be more recommended services? Or one of our schools because of that, right?
Yeah. So just probably two things to keep in mind on that. So our allocation of supplies and materials and school expenditures are at same per dollar per head calculation for each school. Teacher allocation, the best way to track, and this is general ed classrooms, and I'll speak to special ed separately, is by looking comparatively at the class size of the building. And we have tracked this very tightly over the years because we never, we can't always make it a perfect, perfectly equal in terms of average class size because we just have little but we have always been within about a student in terms of the average class size. And you're starting to see, in fact, memorial is starting to tick up. But they're also in that funny place where you can't nicely split into three or you're going to get very small classes. And splitting into two makes them a little bit larger than we'd like them to be. So I think in terms of staffing allocation for general classroom, they have, they have the right amount of staff for the number of students to create an equal situation for kids per class. Just something to think about. Special ed is completely, in terms of moderate allocation, moderate students, 80% of our students are just part of every general ed classroom. And there's a liaison that serves of anywhere from 15 to 20, maybe 12 to 20 in some bases, caseloads per building. Where you get into the mismatched staff is where we have the specialized programs. We have two specialized programs at Essex. They're getting a little bit smaller. We're also running into some challenges with accessibility. But there's staffing attached to that, but it's, it's proportionate to the students and the needs in that program. It's not the same formula that we would use for general classroom. Memorial has more specialized programs, but they're district programs. So both programs serve Manchester kids and Essex kids, and depending on the need, you're assigned to the program. But it may, that's why I like to split the staffing out and have started to split the staffing out because it tells a clearer picture if you look at your special education staffing versus your general classroom staffing because it's two sets of rules for allocation. The other thing to keep in mind in terms of looking at staffing at memorial, memorial houses the district wide pre-K program. And that's a very high staff count. We have three teachers, but we have, I think, eight TAs in that program. Because the basis of the program is early identification of special education. And the TAs, in many cases are one-on-one TAs in addition to the general pre-K TA. So that's a staff heavy program. It sits at memorial. It's counted in memorial's counts, but it's a district wide program that we merged for efficiency. Years ago, we were running two programs in each of the buildings with double the staff. So this is a way to economize at the time.
Thank you. That makes sense.
All right. My questions, I, I kind of have three. So one is for me to be able to say, I want to go here, 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 which direction? One thing I want to know is actually from our town partners and, and so for anyone listening, next week when we have our public hearing, one thing that would be really helpful to me from our town partners, our healthcare number is going to come in at what it comes in at, no matter what. So whether we choose right now to start at this high watermark and tighten it slowly down the line and chip away or, you know, follow the, the ups and downs with it over the next two months, or whether we choose to say, it's probably going to get to this, let's, let's take a look at that. That to me is a question that I'd like to know our opinion from our town partners. How would they prefer we do this? Because if we, if we know that we're reasonably sure it's probably going to go down, it does most years, not every year, but most years it does go down some. If we want to tighten that up now, we're taking the risk that our town partners, you know, in two months, when we're still doing this, it, it, it goes up a little or, or whatever. But my point is, I would like to know from them so that we have an idea of what we're really working with. We, if we're getting $44,000 a point and we can, you know, close that gap a little bit with an earlier estimate. If they're comfortable with that, then that's something I'd be interested in pursuing. But I want to know that from our town partners. The second thing that I would like to understand is regarding the principal asks, which I think you really clearly laid it out and I appreciate it. And, and I know this is a shift because other committees' makeups in the past have just, have had a different kind of relationship with the budget process. And I appreciate that we have this information to consider. Looking at each of these things, I'm going to have an opinion. John's going to, we're all each going to have our own opinion on this. And so I'm interested in knowing how, how much opinion you want versus we support those versus we don't, you know, wants versus needs. So that will help me determine what I, where I stand on that.
I think feedback is great. Ultimately, what the school committee needs to decide is how big an allocation are you giving us? And the professionals need to make the determination as to what they, what they're adding.
Right.
That sounds very, it doesn't sound collaborative, but it's not intended not to be. It is collaborative and I think that's where the feedback comes into play. But I think we need to trust the principals to determine the value of an instructional approach to helping them get to their goal.
Yeah.
What you need to determine as a board is whether or not you can support financial investment in that at this point in time.
Okay. And then the third question I have is, I, I asked a similar question to what Jake has asked about reserves. You know, what is, what gets us, you know, with, with all these things down and how that looks over the next couple of years? But for me, I, I don't even want to answer that question. I don't even want the answer until I know more about MSBA. Because I think that the MSBA potential is going to make a big difference in our reserves conversation. We need to know what we have to work with. So for me, I'm willing to hold back on that, knowing that that answer could come within the next couple of weeks. So those are my questions. Thank you. Anna?
Can I ask for a clarifying question?
Yeah.
To bring it back up. The total budget in the first paper too, I think that you mentioned that 878,000 is a total increase. In this scenario, it is on the total budget, right? Total expense?
Yeah. $1 million, $100, 1,133,000.
Is that in addition to this, the page 10-ish, like the total investment that we will need is $1 million?
So if we look
Was that incorporated?
Yeah. If we look at the sheets, again, the orange is the tentative budget at about a million. If we look at the staffing in smaller caps, that would be direct additions to the operating budget. It's about $300,000 more back to the budget. In addition to the school choice, rear of allocation for capital, which is around $400,000.
So that's the 878,000 I'm talking about.
This is, and this is what happens. This is the assessment impact. This is the total implication on the budget. So our tentative budget plus all in on director asks, principal and director asks would be an additional $300,000 over this year.
Right. So my
All right.
So then my question is, the, the assessment includes the 878,000. How much does it put us over? The, what is the fine, what is that number that we, if we don't want to go through over, right, with assets? What is that number?
Well, I don't, we don't, yeah.
I shouldn't answer that question. We've been, I, I think what, everyone has different takeaways from the all boards meeting. We heard two and a half was going to be a difficult lift. So we're including that here as the option. I don't know what that does to their finances and I don't know what that does to their availability. I'm not sure if they totally do right now because I don't know where they are in their process. But this one, let's call this one as close to, as close to the two and a half as we can get.
Okay, this is
Two and a half total.
Okay.
Not to Essex, which might be higher, but Essex, Pam pointed in the public hearing said that they were trying to get to two and a half total being a potential target at that meeting that was some time ago. So that, I agree that that's the number that's closest based on what we've heard today. Even though it's not to Essex, it's total.
Could I make a follow-up comment? Because I think you're bringing up something that we need to maybe address right now. Because, because so much of this conversation ends up being, when we're trying to bring it down, about the assessment. Do we want to just pick one of these lanes? I mean, may, maybe if we, if we know that the revenue sources, you know, if, if what we're really talking about in the end is the assessment impacts, do we want to just choose that to be the conversation that we have so that we don't have to bounce back and forth on this? What, what do we think about this?
What does that mean? Because, because if we only choose the assessment ones, that means that everything else that we want to add, does that mean that we come up with the money from reserve? We try to figure it out and only focus on what we get assessed?
I'll give you, we talked a lot about years of service. So over the years, I think this whole conversation is what creates the confusion for people. Because we start down this and then we leap to apportionment. So we're talking about an apportionment percentage, an assessment percentage. Neither one of these are the actual budget. And then, so we're talking about $26 million, but wait a minute, it's a $30 million budget. We're, it's, I understand when people say it's confusing because we, everyone launches and is trying to solve the problem and bouncing between all of these sets of numbers. I put this up here so our, our friends who are here from the towns can kind of see what their implication is. I think these are the numbers up here that the committee needs to work with. Because this is your budget.
The $1 million.
This is the budget.
Yeah.
The, the assessment is the result. Budget is what we should be talking about. That's right.
I'm in support. I just think we need to keep that in mind altogether.
And it's not easy because we all kind of know how it starts to flow through.
And if you were to ask me, like, I would say the starting point is the carried forward level services, the, you know, the highlighted orange.
That I am going to ask.
Will you end that then?
I know.
Well, you asked all of us, but that's
We're, we're, yeah, we're, so we'll finish questions, then we'll do the comments for that for sure. Yeah.
Um, I would recommend us to tighten up.
Hold on, we're still in comments for now.
That's my comment.
I have a question for now. Still in questions because I have that master check.
To like jeopardize it. Why don't we tighten up?
Ask in the form of a question.
Why do we not look at advertisement, athletic fees, and maybe other fees that we want to increase our revenue? Because the advertisement, a Sweeney Park, they bring in 20K revenue. Our beautiful field, we just did at least 50K, I would think. Plus athletic fee that you mentioned, we could probably bring in 30K, 20 to 30K. That's 80,000. That's one or two interventionist, whatever that might be. Now, do, there are quite a lot of different things that, you know, that you mentioned about the healthcare insurance. Right now, we are budgeting at 14.5%.
Yep.
In the past few years, it's never that high. And then if I look at the past budget versus actual, what we actually end up at the end, every year since 2019, our budget was between 300K to 600K over our actual.
Yep.
Big part of that is probably health insurance. So while we are trying to nickel and dime and trying to figure out which one, or because everything that, on the priority, like the request is all very important, especially while trying to, you know, keep in mind the excellence, the academic excellence with our low scores and, and whatnot. I find it hard to think about what we need to add in when our base is some fat in it. When we can actually use some of that into incorporate into all this in there already.
I agree with you. On the dollars and cents and looking at the spreadsheet side of it. And if we can, I, my concern has nothing to do with the numbers or tightening the numbers. It has to do with the vote, the voiced commitment year over year that the budget doesn't get any higher than it is right now. So I think that's where Teresa was going. If, if we can communicate effectively with our town partners and say, we're going to tighten now, if they will accept the fact that in January, if it doesn't go as planned, we may need to raise the budget at that point, let's bring it down to none. I don't want to put, and I can't advocate to put the district in the position to take it down now, risk it going up in February and then we're cutting the program because we promised we would not escalate beyond the, the December number. So Anna, I think you're absolutely right. When you look back at the numbers and nobody's going to argue with you on that, it's more about what level of risk that we want to assume if that gamble doesn't beat now. And I think I'm burned, not going to lie. I am burned by a 28% healthcare increase in March, when they were quoting us 10% at this point in time. And we didn't see it coming. And maybe I just need to get over that and we, and we take the chance. But I, I think when we're talking about transparency and trust in our word, if we're saying this is the highest and then we're coming back and saying, but wait, no, it's not. That's what concerns me more than what, what plug number we use at this point. But if we decide as a group to go for, we're going to absolutely do that.
It is the same thing. So to go back to what you just said, that can happen. We, we tried to make sure it does not. And we can't simply say we're not paying our health insurance, but we can't negotiate with them, right? There is no way to do that. Once we send a budget, we also cannot ask for more money, right? I mean, I don't, maybe in some emergency way or some, so if something like healthcare, which is such a sizable portion of our budget, that blows up like that after we send a budget, the school district and the kids are screwed. I mean, pardon, but screwed, right? And that's what happened that year, right? Like, I mean, or we need to like start to transfer significant money out of our reserves, like, none of it's good.
We made some cuts and we used some reserves to
Yeah. Which is why we tend to estimate a little bit higher at this point. Now, again, questions already been made to ask if maybe we shouldn't do that, but sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we get through all our questions because I know it's okay. No, don't, that's all right. Want to get into discussions.
It could make sense to just wait for the next round of reports from USI. That's our broker in, in January and then revisit and take it down at that point. Or we take it down there? We're, we're open. We just want to all join arms and go into it together.
My last question would be just for the cost per student, just FYI, I just leave a calculation. I mean, 2024, our cost per student is 23K per student in, in this budget without the additional add-ons is going to be 24K. So something for us to think about is, I think the, the question from last year, budget process is, you know, our cost per student is high. What kind of services are we providing? When there is 40% of the high school courses are less than 10 people, 10 students, you know? So things, we just need to see how we can service and package this when the cost is continuing to go up. And I have no answer. I just want to raise that.
All right. Erica, do you have questions?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead Pam. And then Erica's questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, my, I think a lot of them are pretty specific and hopefully very fast. Starting with the E and D that was put toward as, as a revenue source this year, can you just help me understand how, how did you arrive at that figure? The 304, USI?
350. Round it up.
I mean, so what was, what was the total certified E and D?
Oh, the total certified E and D, the 20.
I mean, yeah, this is the response I started last night. We don't, we have 22 certify. We don't have 23.
We estimated last time 1.2 million. It was the last update that we provided in September. We could know it by the time January rolls around.
Okay. I think I'm asking the wrong question then. I, I'm just wondering, so
What is our E and D?
No, I, I'm wondering, so last year we put 287 E and D.
This is this year. Yeah.
This year, sorry. Next year, in this budget that you just presented, there's 350,000. That number could have been 500,000. That number could have been 200,000. I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to understand like
Why'd you pick that number?
Yes. That's what I'm trying to
Yeah. I rounded up from 287 to around I rounded up from two eighty seven to around.
Okay, you said rounded up and I thought that would have gotten you to like two ninety or two hundred, but you, so you just chose it. Okay. I thought there might be. Something else there and I just wanted to understand because we could in theory choose a different number, correct?
I think the previous year we used three fifty. It was just around one hundred and fifty.
Okay. Um, but we could, we could choose a different number.
It's not targeted at paying for any one thing. It's not.
Okay.
No science.
Um, with respect to school choice, I won't belabor this. I already mentioned Pam. I just, I think we need to do. A little bit more of a study on, I I I'm in favor of a revenue source if we have one, but we need to make sure it's a revenue source. Um, and so I I will continue to speak to Pam and not Avi. About how we make sure that we feel comfort in those numbers. Um, in addition to school choice, I just wondered in looking at the. Enrollment numbers for some of our specialty specialized programs like the Earl program. It looks like, and I may not be understanding this correctly, but it looks like there's space in those programs. And I was wondering if that is. Up another potential revenue source to sell those seats.
Yep. We, we do tuition into those seats, but it's by. Kind of inter-district agreement. So if a special ed director in another town has a profile of a student that would be served by Earl. They'd contact us and if there is, it's a little bit like the school choice concept. If we have enough capacity over what we. Anticipate the need will be, we will tuition in a student. Unlike school choice, when you tuition in a student, there's a good faith agreement that the student will be with you for the duration, but we also aren't bound by it. So if there are. A significant need that emerged, we would reserve the right at the end of the school year to ask them to find another placement. On the. And we do, and on the needs and asks page, that ACE program tuition in, that's an example of a program right now that we're taking tuition students into.
So I guess my, yes, my suggestion would just be that we continue to look at those, some of those programs and see if there's space and maybe you're already doing it. But it looked, it appeared to me that maybe there's.
Actually working with a collaborative group of superintendents in the North Shore to see if we can't. Create a database of programs that we have. So because we're all running into these similar problems.
I'm sorry, I just framed that as a suggestion. I wasn't actually to that part of.
That's okay.
The the um. Question, and I think you answered it, but you were going quickly. I was surprised to see the same interventionists. Same level of interventionist support at Memorial as was needed at Essex, just because we all saw the data and the data had. Fairly dramatic differences. I I don't doubt that Memorial could use support as well. Did you say that? The interventionist would be used as needed and therefore presumably if needs are higher in Essex, they would predominantly be.
Yep, and the the interventionists are math and are reading specialists, and that's a different group. They're looking for an instructional coach, which would be. A teacher leader who is. Working with teachers on improving their craft. So they're not providing direct services to students. They're providing direct professional development support and coaching for teachers to. Um, implement change in teaching practice in their classes.
But don't, don't we have each of the, we have a.
So we have a math and an ELA split. We're calling them fifty fifty split between the two schools.
Um, we have. A math and ELA coach split between the two schools and you're calling it fifty fifty, but they will go where where they're needed.
Yep.
Um, but then we also have. An interventionist at both schools.
That position's already on the books. That position's already active. It's a, the grant is expiring, so we have to add that person into the operating budget. And that person is primarily assigned. The Essex right now. That's the math interventionist.
So um, what she's looking for.
Yeah.
So the interventionist Essex or even Memorial that that they shared is already existing.
Yes.
So even with that existing, our testing score is still extremely low. So we are saying that adding the shared instructional coach. To coach the teacher is not, has nothing to do with the students. Uh, point five for math for Essex. And then point five, potentially point five to one. Do we think that is enough to kind of raise the score to where we want it to be or even just at the.
Sure.
Acceptable level?
I would answer it this way at this point. Increased scores may be a byproduct, but it's not the sole function of the role. The so, the function of the role is to help us address. Desired changes is outlined in the school and district improvement plans in terms of instructional practice in the classroom. And with improved instructional practice in tier one, they called that tier one. The byproduct is intended to be increased student achievement. That's the coaching and instructional growth. Of tier one classroom teaching. That's one component of it. A second component of it would be the intervention support. That's. Data-driven identification of students who need remedial support in a particular area. They are assigned. Responsibility to the classroom teacher to remediate first. I think that's part of our big push is to keep reintroducing the fact that. Children's progress is first and foremost the responsible of the classroom teacher. It's not an outsourced. Responsibility to someone else, but that other individual is there to provide either additional time. Right? So tier one plus an additional thirty minutes, forty minutes, whatever the prescription is of support. Support the student in the classroom for particular. Possibly support the student with additional time out of the classroom. That's the intervention role. So intervention role is direct service of students. Coach is. Technique improvement.
So. Sorry, following up on that, though, really the coach is the only thing that's added by this budget.
Right.
The other is just a change in funding source, so. It's an observation, but I'm I'm surprised, I guess. I I had thought that in light of what we were hearing about. The data that Essex would be looking for more. Uh, and I, you know, I don't know that that we could give it to them, but I had, I had thought we would see more in this request. And I guess, are you surprised?
I'm surprised because I think what they're saying, and we may be saying it in as you speak, is that the prescription for real improvement. Is improvement in the actual tier one classroom, not. Getting, not outsourcing or sending out students for extras someplace else. It's about improving. I think time on task. And outcomes from tier one instructional practice. That's been the push behind the literacy. Um, unification between the schools. That's been the push between, be behind creating a unified program of studies between both schools. To ensure that kids are getting the same amount of time in each subject area in the same amount of, in the same type of instructional approach. Instructional approach is what they're trying to deal with with the instructional coach.
Okay. Um, final question, last question. Um, the, when we heard from the elementary schools, uh, the one thing I thought I got the sense of at Memorial was that there was a real need for. A third teacher in a couple of the grades, or at least in one. The grades, I know a large grade is graduating, so the fifth grade class is moving out, but both the third and fourth. Grade classes are currently at twenty four students. Per, per teacher, which is high. And I thought my sense from the administration was that that was. Becoming unmanageable. And I know we've deferred, or it looks like the principal has deferred that request. I just wonder if you have any further feedback on how they were able to get comfortable.
I don't know if it's a comfort level or if. We're at a point with the numbers where if you look at, I'm looking at. Memorial. Fourth grade is at twenty four. Which is slightly higher than we'd like it to be, right? So we're two students over our benchmark target of twenty two. But if you divide that into three, you're back down into your fourteen, fifteen student section, which seems to be. Not well received. Um. And I don't, honestly, I think, you know, the principal would certainly take that in a minute if we were able to afford it to him, but we can't replicate that for all of the grade levels. And that's going to be, that becomes the problem. So it's very hard to balance it. He's got the one. Additional teacher. If you look at the first grade, that's at fourteen, where he's trying to strategically use the additional teacher to kind of go, to go into. Grade level where size isn't necessarily representative of the need or the amount of work to be done. But I think. That that's how it's placing. But yes, we would have, you know, I mean, we're happy to take any teachers.
No, you you make a good point that that an extra teacher would bring those classrooms to to a size that probably also wouldn't be palpable, but.
And Caroline was here. I mean, this is where we, this is, it's funny, things are very cyclical, which is, we were. We were at a similar point back in like the twenty ten, twenty eleven when I came on, but there was at, the numbers were starting to peak closer to twenty eight and twenty nine. And there was a real push to add teachers. And when we did the the math, it made her, made sense, but we kind of had to wait till it got to a point. I think why we're including it in a year or two out is that we're regularly watching it and we're going to let you, it's going to be on our list as soon as we see it starting to pop as. Pushing toward thirty.
First. Can I just add a comment?
Is it a question?
No.
Then we're going to do comment after. And move into the comment section. It's eight oh three.
That's fine.
Thank you. Um, so we have about twelve minutes left on this. There are six of us. And what Pam and Avi are asking of us is, is. Wait, what comment do we want to give? What direction do we want to give on that spectrum here? So I will start and then I'm going to go this way. So be prepared in that order. So roughly two weeks a piece max. Okay. So my, my comment for what to consider moving forward is I. I'm not in favor of cutting to meet a. Proceed request. I'm not in favor of that. I'm in favor of starting at that level services carry forward space. However. I would really like to see that number before the asks, not at three point four three. Three to three and a half is our kind of each year thing. I would really like to see that shrink down closer to to three-ish. And. It may be that we have a conversation about reserves down the line. I I don't know. But I I. I want to see what it looks like when we have to tighten things up so that our carry forward is closer to three than three and a half. To go with that, I think that the asks for the principal, from the principals for those. Those items, especially that involve remediation or or uh instructional support to increase, not just for Essex Elementary, but for all. Depots. I think those are really important and I would like to see them incorporated through offsets as we go through the budget process. Um, I do not think it is reasonable uh to say we're going to jump in with a carry forward plus all these asks at a four and change. I think that's unreasonable for both our town partners. Um, but. So my goal is to be mindful that, um, I don't want to say let's just cut to get to two and a half, but we. I definitely am not in support of just going all in on this. So I want us to keep moving forward with. The refining process, knowing that that is part of the natural budget process. It happens through the course of the next couple of months, and I want to see where that shakes out, knowing that um, that our educational program remains sound. Uh, because we have heard, I I personally have heard very clearly from uh the communities that. That we do run the risk of um. Of. Losing our supporters if we continue to. Reduce our program scope. So that's where I fall with this. Anna, what's your comment?
Uh, just to come on that, uh, first, the elementary school class, even though they're big, I have kids in elementary, is um, is. Hard for the teacher. However, I do think it's because what helps is also, uh, there are a lot of special uh teacher or TAs in the classroom. And sometimes you are like up to four along with the teacher. So it's not like this one teacher would not help. Um, just FYI. My comment on the budget. If we were to do three percent, even three point four, whatever that might be. I don't see a way out of the super town.
But right now, we're just talking about for our, so for maybe for you, that is the question, but.
I'm getting there.
Right now.
So. That's what I feel is not just about, like Jake was saying, not just about the percentage. We've got to think about, like, looking at the different ways to. To. Um, service the priorities that we, uh, that people are listing, um, but also to make it reasonable. Just to have a, you know, data point. That while we're thinking about eighty thousand dollar here, or even you mentioned about eight thousand is very important to put in here for the walkie talkie. Meanwhile, we're sitting at two point eight million dollar reserves. So when we are trying to cut, not not cut programs, when we're trying to not implementing program that we know there is a need. Meanwhile, we are now looking at the different ways to see how we can meet that still. And trying to just be more creative. What I'm saying is that's not tied to that percentage. Let's really think about how we can feed into that number and bring it down to still. To still service.
It's probably important to say that even if we start something with a fee. Or with reserves, it becomes part of the operating budget. And then does become part of the equation for percentage growth every year. I mean, we had a pretty tight policy for most of the fourteen years that you don't add personnel through reserves because essentially you're creating funding cliff. So it's a good, it's good increase. And that's why I think you need the multi-year. I would strongly suggest we don't use reserves to add any one thing, but to. To balance. But what, like, the conversations we were having several years ago, it needs to be a bridge to something else. And then something else may have to be reduction down the line. I'm not advocating for that, but. It's not sustainable to say we're going to add the hundred thousand dollar teacher with reserves and pay for it for three years and then pass it on to the, because it gets passed on to the towns at some point. I just wanted to make. To clarify that. Okay.
Um, just. I am. I I think I'm going to echo some of Teresa's comments that I am. Very interested in seeing. Many of the things that are in the school, in the principal asks incorporated into the budget. However. A budget that ends at four percent growth is not sustainable. But but we have to do something to address. Some of what we understand from the data to be challenges to academic. Performance in our schools. So so that 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 just has to be part of our program. And so I guess my ask to you is. How we do that? What, and you've made really great suggestions for ways that we can add some programs and have offsets. But I thi- I think the question that we have been asked by our town partners, or at least um, our town partners in Essex somewhat repeatedly, is. If there is anything that can be done. To, to offset some of these necessary. Offset some of the necessary growth by looking at our decline in enrollment. And if if there is something. If there, if there's a way to rearrange personnel, if there's something we can do, I mean, the the growth, um, the enrollment numbers. That is within our packet shows. A point that's been made to us. And certainly at the high school, we can see it. Adding some school choice students will offset that a bit, I believe, but um, we just. I think part of the narrative when you talk at our next meeting to our part, town partners has to address. That issue. And what you'd recommend, because I I also want to say, I don't think, I I feel really confident from the people I've heard from in Manchester. That you don't, that we don't want to see program cuts, but isn't there something we could do?
I'm glad you brought it up because I don't think I spoke to it. Um, if you look at the list of principal and director requests, you only see them from the elementary school. You don't see them from the secondary. That's because in speaking with Julie, the desire is to reschedule staff. So she has appropriate numbers of staff. If she starts to. If she tries to hit a target of reduction of sections under ten, like we were talking about in subcommittee, her. Initial interest is to reallocate some of that either to the virtual high school concept. To offset loss of potential small sections and also to reassign some personnel to academic center for support. So if we just, I think. Where we're at is if we just take those as cuts to reduce assessment, to reduce the budget. She's going to lose the opportunity to reallocate just to address some of the achievement needs that we're finding. You see them at the elementary because elementary was the first area that had the enrollment decline, and we have been systematically reducing. Merging personnel where we can, creating shared personnel, uh, shared staff positions, reducing classroom positions. I mean. Memorial School at one point had three classrooms minimum per grade level, four at two grade levels. So they've come down from eighteen or nineteen to thirteen sections. There's nowhere to go to create a staffing reduction to fund something else at the elementary. Um, that's why we brought the interventionist in from Brand. So. Elementary is there as a direct ask because they either need an allocation and you saw some allocation. elementary is there as a direct ask because they either need an allocation and you saw some allocations in there from other areas of the district to try to chip away at the total cost of them. My caution would be when we're looking at potential, um, minimum class sec, minimum, um, minimum class size policy concepts, even if they're not hard policies, but their goals. Savings there should be reallocated to other high need areas in the building. Like that could be if we solve our student achievement, if, if we get student achievement back to where we want in short order, that could be money two years down the line for your library, for a librarian concept. And I think I'm, I will silence down the caution flag that we're running out of positions. We don't need somewhere else, even if we can make something more efficient in another area. So making sectioning more efficient creates staffing opportunity that can be redeployed. I can't recommend, I can do it, but I can't recommend now using that just for a straight budget reduction. So that's where we're a little bit of hands tied right now and we're starting to look like new expanded asks instead of the allocations. I don't know if that was more confusing.
Are you good, Erica?
I'm good. I guess I, I don't, I don't, it's not, it's not clear to me how, how you're going, going to get us the type of budget that I think we want because I, you know, speaking to a comment that was made earlier, um, I do think all of our decisions need to be made with students at the forefront of those decisions. However, it's all within the larger context of these budgetary debates because I think it's student centric to also consider the fact that it's not good for any students for us to end up at a joint town meeting in May. I don't think that's good for anyone. I don't think it's good for the district. So throughout this process, I'm really struggling with how much to weigh what I think the students need and deserve with what our town partners are willing to support. And it's a tough needle to thread, but
probably worth going back the top sheet in understanding the source of the growth. We're essentially, it, I say this without judgment. We can be at two and a half. To be at two and a half, we are going to need to reduce staffing to pay for staffing because of the cost of salary growth year to year.
John?
I'll just say that we should, you know, start with the carry forward scope and then hope that we can incorporate some of these requests. Which I think are fair and reasonable requests from the principals and hopefully we can get there. Um, that's what I'll add. And I touched on this during the last meeting we had, you know, just, and you just mentioned it Pam about maximizing the efficiencies to high school with teachers. People have capacity and we can fill that, you know? So that's all I have.
Thank you. Jake?
I think Erica actually said everything that I wanted to say. So I will second Erica's intentions and questions.
Thank you.
Um, so my, my general thought here, I suppose that, uh, again, I have to support like that level services, whatever we end up calling that, uh, level. Simply because in my opinion, you know, as long as I've been doing that, we, we need to at least be there. You know, just a little personal commentary around that, uh, you know, since I've been part of this committee. You know, I started, uh, you know, during COVID, when we were still meeting virtually, we talked a lot about, uh, that first budget year about the impacts. And the, the impacts that that code would have specifically regarding loss of learning. At that time, you know, we weren't able to identify that yet clearly, weren't able to identify. You know, what that looked like. And I think we're clearly seeing that now. Um, so you know, at some point in time, our students deserve, you know, we, we need to do something about that, right? Um, I don't think level services does that. Um, now how we get there is you know, up to you, our you know, fantastic principals, our staff, right? To figure out how to do that in the most efficient way possible. Um, and I do feel like we're doing that. Unfortunately, you know, I don't think for any of us it happens fast enough, but that's the way it is, right? I think that's reality. We can't, uh, uh, fix that overnight. Um, and I guess just the, so that's where I stand on that in, in general. Um, you know, when it comes to class sizes. You know, um, I, I've spoken with teachers, I've known a lot of teachers over my lifetime, you know, class does a simple number of class size isn't necessarily, uh, it doesn't mean, you know, classes are different, right? So a class size of twenty-four can be very manageable or a class size of fourteen can be extremely difficult, right? It depends on who the students are, especially in a small district that can vary quite a bit. So again, I trust the principals, I, you know, at, you know, at moral, even though I have a couple of very high class sizes that are above what our standard benchmark is, that's just a data point and it doesn't actually tell the story of what those classes are, you know, what the kids are able to absorb, what the teachers are able to manage. So, you know, I get that part. Um, one thing that I just haven't heard at all talked about tonight, um, you know, talking about our great administration and figuring that out. You know, I know last year we did start, uh, in, in disgust about how our administrative staff has been capped at that two and a half percent for quite a long time. Uh, you know, in my opinion, you know, what that means, especially over the past two years, they've essentially been taking pay cuts for the past two years when you know, you put that against inflation. Um, I know this is going to be a very difficult budget year, but I would like to maybe see a little bit of something there for our staff. Otherwise, we're going to continue to fall behind. Now, our administration staff only gets that two hundred percent. They don't get any step raises or anything else. And that's a concern of mine that hasn't been brought up yet. You know, as other districts are doing that, we become less competitive in general and people may start to look in other areas. We did lose principal last year. I don't know exactly why, but anyways, that's something that hasn't been brought up yet. And maybe I'd like to at least explore what that number looks like and see where we could maybe, because I know that, you know, we don't have a large number of administrative staff. It's relatively small, right? So you know, what would that number look like? Because I don't, I didn't hear it brought up the last time.
All right. Thank you. All right. So that is our round of comment. I hope that gives you some direction. It's not as clear cut, but I, I think a lot of the conversation, nobody wants to make cuts, but sometimes we have to make cuts and yeah.
Can I try a summary statement, please? I, I think we're all in the same place, which is how much can we get? And still get as close to two and a half as possible. How?
Sure.
I will say, I will say as close to three. I, I think two and a half is, is not as sustainable, but, but yes, but lower. Yeah. But I know others have said two and a half. So yes.
We all want it to be as efficient as possible.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Okay, just, just
Other, yeah, you're right.
Sure. The most we can for the most, the best. For the tightest number we can come up with. Where are we landing on healthcare? Because we can, we, we can with the stroke of a pen move to the left.
Could we get some input from our town partners on that next, next week? I, I, because I feel like that, that has a real implication to them. I, I mean, it ha- it does to us as well through this process as we could talk about it, but um, as they go through their planning, um, I think this is one area that I'm, I'd really like their input about how and, and that also goes for how tight they want us to be running this budget. I'm, I'm really interested to hear from the, um, select boards and the, the finance committees, how tightly they want to see that.
What do you expect to hear from them that we, do they have a certain expertise about healthcare percentages that might inform that? Or is it how, is it more about how we manage our budget?
More about, I would like to know from them how they, how they perceive us managing our budget in terms of the, the estimates. Yeah. Because we start high and that has traditionally been the, the preferred method, right? But we know that we can't expect that all the traditionally held assumptions hold any longer. And so I would like to know from them, do they want, do they want to see a school district? You know, it's one thing for us seven, but do they want to see us run it at a, you know, one percent margin? Do they want to see us run it at a, you know, greater? I'm interested.
That's not a town, uh, income question. It's really us, like how we want to.
It's our decision, but it, I, my statement is that I'm interested in what our town partner's outlook is on this because we're going to get it anyway.
But I think we should run it, how we want to run it with, and let them know like, hey, this is conservative or this is where it might end up. In, in my opinion, I think we should be conservative and run it at the high uh, rate. And then anything, any improvement is just bonus for the budget and then we can fix it from there. I mean, that's how I would, that's my opinion on that.
I, I, I would say, I think I agree with Anna and John. However, the question may be if we were to run it much tighter and we were surprised by a number, would they be comfortable with us coming back with a higher number later? If that's the assumption that we would be changing potentially?
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking is how they feel about that risk level. Because it will impact them if we end up in that position.
That could inform our decision then.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I hope I wasn't being unclear, but I think that they should tell us how to do it. I'm interested in their, in others' opinion to form my decision. Okay. Any other questions you want to ask of us? Pam and Abby?
No. So I, I will keep the fourteen point five in there for the time being, knowing that the goal is to get that work down to the lowest number possible. Maybe it comes down lower than nine, that's in the and then it'll be this group's determination how to utilize any savings there.
Right. Is this?
From this question.
Okay.
Preparation for December thirteenth. Do we have, are we going to talk about that at some point? We don't have another meeting before then. Are we asking particular questions? Do we as a school committee have a particular role that we want to play in it? I'm just wondering how we kind of set what that's going to look like or what we want to get from that.
So what it's been in the past is Pam, Pam and Abby, oh, he'll be back. He'll be back. Offer a similar presentation.
Almost a identical introduction.
Yeah. And for us, it's a listening exercise. It's an underst- uh, opportunity to hear from anybody who comes, what there is. So we, we get to talk about and ask our questions and input, but now it's, it's the public's chance to do that. So not just town leaders, but anyone in the public. So, um, for us, the preparation is to be prepared to listen and take notes.
Okay. But do we have particular questions that we are soliciting input on, or is this literally anything?
General, yeah, well, maybe the same question that, that is before us, where on that spectrum do we wish to fall? What are your, what I find helpful in those is to learn what are people's priorities. Um, but to, to your question, no, we haven't set time to, to write specific questions that we're asking input on.
Does the spectrum framing help or not?
Is the spectrum about the percentage or the budget?
I think for our town partners, it's about the percentage and that's where they live. But I think that people who, who show up, you know, concerned about programming, those questions might have a different meaning.
If I were framing it to just a focus group that I didn't know was thinking and calculating the implication. I think you could frame it in terms of level services, you know, does allow us to do some reorganization, reallocation and self-investment. The further to the right you go, the more investment we can make in items that appear on school improvement and strategic plans that we can't accommodate. The further left you go, the closer you you're looking at taking away opportunities to invest, to manage, you know, to manage a growth number. I don't know if that works really. I can work on some of the framing, but that's in my head, how you can make it less about the actual percentage and more about the implication of sliding on that scale. Okay, just looking for feedback.
I think the way you started out tonight was great where you talked about the three main drivers to the growth. And that's just like this, these are the times we're living in right now. And, you know, I'm experiencing it in the real estate industry, the same thing, insurance and other things. So, um, I, I think people can understand that. Um, so I, again, you did a great job this evening was just how you presented that and go with that next, next week.
Sarah has been providing chat, stuff in the chat. Do you want to entertain?
No, no. I do, I do not want to entertain comments from the chat. We should be closed. Um, okay. Does that give you what you need for tonight?
Yep.
Thank you. So this is the start of a conversation. This is not the end of a conversation. It's just the start. Um, thank you all for your preparation and, uh, moving forward with that. So with that in mind, that actually, um, kind of helps frame the, um, next agenda item, which is the new conversation about um, the evaluation of budget related suggestions and ideas from all boards meeting. So that list that we've had. So we, um, we actually have some a lot of that is already in process, which we, we've noted. So some of these conversations are. But I broke it down, um, based on the, the straw poll that we did, and I, I know I mentioned this before. Um, but I also prioritize them within those three categories, um, at this time. So the categories of reductions in budget, category of, uh, increased revenue and, and then the kind of other category. And so looking at the time, I think a reasonable thing for tonight would be to look at the top, uh, make decisions about the top, um, the top, uh, priority level based on how many people thought, yes, this is something we need to focus on now for fiscal year twenty-five. Uh, make a decision and it, uh, about whether we're going to, um, attack this and if so, how, um, and make some assignments. So in, and then one additional. So in the um, productions in budget category, class size was the thing that the most people cared about, just looking at that. Now that's already in process. But it helped me understand, does it sound like that's something that's going to be impactful for this budget conversation in terms of a, from a policy side?
Say that again, from a policy side?
Yes, in terms of creating policy, it, it doesn't sound like that's going to be done in time that would necessarily impact this budget conversation if we get to that point.
There is, there is not going to be a policy about class size that will impact this budget conversation. That said, in the subcommittee conversations, Pam and administrative team are hearing the, the requests in the direction and are accounting for that in their planning and thinking.
Okay.
So is there, you know, I think Pam's already spoken tonight about potentials at the high school. So it's, it very likely could have an impact. It's going to be relatively small, but that's a good first step.
Yeah.
Um, but no, there will not be a specific policy in time to drive this.
So in, but the initial, so the reallocation of the point six for language is kind of the first bite at that apple. So now can worry about top. Um, and I think we're projecting maybe, I, I don't want to say it out loud. The commitment is trying to reduce by at least target, like a fifty percent reduction in sections under ten, but understanding that that's where that Julie and her team has to do as they build the schedule and that I think we're toying between the hard guard rail, which makes it easier for her. The, the outcomes may not be easier, but the planning is easier versus the soft implementation where she's going to have to subjectively look at what comes up as under ten and make some critical decisions about what has to stay and what could potentially be delivered in a different way or is in the third year of low enrollment and maybe considered not offered. She's going to have to account for every kid and where they are in that process. So I think that's, you know, we said that at the meeting the other day, that's what we're working toward. So to plan it now for a recommended budget, we wouldn't have a hard number. Commitment is that if we can find savings in March, at that time, we would talk to you like we are tonight about the benefit of reallocating those savings. at that time, we would talk to you like we are tonight about the benefit of reallocating those savings versus taking it as a direct reduction.
So what I, I guess where I want to get at is I just want to make sure that we are able to respond back based on the commitments we made to do these things. So it is fair, is it fair to say then that we as a committee are committed and have made assignments to considering class size in an official capacity, um, both now for the fiscal year 25 budget and now for upcoming, for later years?
Yes, we are directly, you have passed the subcommittee to do that and we are doing what we want to do.
Just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that. So that said, we, we do, we don't have to decide tonight, but we do need, um, to pick a time, when would be the time for a more lengthy understanding so that, because I understand now that we have also community people joining those subcommittee meetings. So there may be a point at which some of our committee members are behind on information relative to, um, even our community members. And so we are gonna need a lengthy report out on that at some point.
I'm not quite sure what you mean about being behind community members, but, um, certainly his work is viable for us to give an update on where we are on that, whatever time makes sense.
What I, what I mean is that we, we don't all attend those, but other community members do, which makes sense. And so I want to make sure we have all of the information that others have, yes. That's what I mean, yeah. Um, and that was.
Just to check on that, and when, when do we actually post notes from subcommittee?
Like you're in my head.
Okay.
Um, we have, I was, I was thinking about this on Saturday night. Um, with the greater frequency we're having and now we're doing some virtually, I think we need to look at maybe adding some, and Maria can't do it, potentially trying to find another, note taker for the school committee that can be used during the day just to help keep us on track. I know you guys have been taking notes.
We've been taking notes, so we, you know, we've been playing the role, but.
We have them, but I think, I would think it might be helpful to have kind of a formal set that's posted and we make it through the same process.
But just, just in terms of, terms of making people available, we have notes that we can make public.
Yeah, so I think maybe we, maybe if we submit them with the packets and put them with the minutes package, that's a way of getting them on a formal record, if you guys agree with that.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, okay, so then the top priority based on, uh, interest here for, um, immediate consideration in the increasing revenue category was school choice. So what we're hearing tonight, help me make sure I'm hearing it right, is that you are already including that, but I'm also hearing that we have some questions about the long-range impact of that, that we want to understand it better. So what is a reasonable, um, assignment, understanding, task point for this?
Can we call it January 9th and if I can have something by the 19th, I will.
Yep. Great, so that's a, thank you. Um, and then in that other category, um, the top thing, and this was of course across the board, um, was understanding level services, which we kind of started again tonight, but really understanding level services. So, um, I think that's being built in. Do we need, do we feel that we need to make an assignment about this? Or do we think that this is something that our committee is taking on actively by virtue of bringing it to light? Yeah.
Um, is there a reason we can't, level services has always confused me. Is there a reason we can't call it roll, roll forward or carry forward? Just makes more sense to me intuitively and avoids trying to define what we mean by level services? Because really what we're saying is we're, we're pushing the budget.
Yeah, we want to.
I'm fine with carry forward. I would say the distinction with level services is that it doesn't necessarily assume that the budget doesn't grow. Because sometimes to maintain, like if you wanted to maintain class size of 42 and you have enrollment increase, you would have to increase your budget to maintain the service level that you provided. I am fine with carry forward, I say we. I don't think, I don't think it's worth holding level services for a particular distinction.
Yeah. At the same time, I think that we still have to clarify for the public what exactly that means and have that information somewhere. Like so printed at our budget hearing somewhere, here's what this actually means, because we do get this over and over and over. So how do we want to assign that? Because this is a thing that needs to happen.
We have a print, we do.
Do we have this already?
This isn't intended to sound expensive, but it does. We do have a printed definition.
Perfect.
That appears in almost every slideshow that we've done.
Okay.
And that frequently asked, to, for good term, use, frequently used terms.
That's right.
And that, but I'm feeling that the language being used isn't communicating appropriately. So if somebody has a better way of framing it, so please share it.
I would like to take the, I would like to take the assignment to look at the way it's been used in our different, in our different media and, um, and put together my thoughts on it to share with the committee. I will take that assignment. Okay. And then the final thing which did not, it is not a priority based on the number of people who are interested, but given the community conversation yet again, is the operational audit. So, um, I'm going to go very structured on this. We, uh, we know where things stand, we know that one town, what's that?
Look at the timer on this one.
Oh, it's my notes. But if I could have a gavel, um, the, uh, the update, the status update is that we have, again, still had no official communication from Town of Essex at this point. Um, they do have that money allocated. Um, I believe they've been talking about it in the Board of Selectmen meetings as well, but we do not have any request at this point. So we need to decide tonight, and we're going to do it in a very clear, structured way, um, what we wish to do as a committee on our own. And this is separately from anything that may come from the Town of Essex, based on the input we've received, the, the, the process of the budget that we have before us and all of the, um, conversation that has come. So I'm gonna ask just a couple very, very basic yes, no questions, which I laid out for everyone in an email. So straw poll, and again, this, this, even though we've already had this, I'm going to ask it again, given new information since we started with that. Yes or no, are people on the committee in favor of hiring a third party to review operations of the district? This does not talk about scope or targeted or brought, but generally speaking, do we wish to employ a third party to review anything we're dealing with here outside of what already takes place? That is a yes or a no. So yes, this is a straw poll. Is anyone in favor right now of employing a third party to come review our operations? That it is a yes or a no, I've got to do it.
I can't answer, but I'll.
You don't have to.
Clarification question.
Yes.
Why are you asking it as a yes or no question? What is the intent of this?
Because if the answer is no, we don't need to get into the when, how and why. We, we don't need to get into that. If the answer is, if the answer here is, we don't have a majority of people who are willing to put district resources right now toward this, maybe they're waiting to see if Essex does something, maybe not. Um, but if the answer is yes, that we are interested or a majority of us are interested in that, then the next question is, um, do we want to do that for impact now on this fiscal year 25 budget? Because that's gonna need to move fast. And if the answer to that is yes, we need to make an assignment right now to have some people come up with the how.
So can you clarify for me? My understanding is there is at the moment, no expectation that we put any funds towards not it.
No, that's what I'm telling you, there's, there's no expectation of anything. Our town partners had their conversation, their votes went differently. All of these things came to us though, for us to independently evaluate. Do we wish to do this? That's my question.
Question, I think what you're asking, correct me if I'm wrong, is if are we open, we here, open to potentially have a third party becoming evaluated, whatever? So that whatever includes, you know, tons of things that we talk about today.
That's not what I'm asking.
Oh, and define the operation.
I am not asking, are we open to an idea? I am asking, does anyone here wish to right now say, yes, I want to have a third party come in and review things?
No, that, you're actually asking, do we want to spend money, our money on a review? But I think that's.
Fair enough. Do, do we wish to, knowing that we will have to act on this independently? Yes, do we wish to move forward with a third party consultant?
To review what though?
Anything at all.
Right, so just, yeah, so what I said earlier.
Yeah, this is a loaded question, there's a lot of implications here.
I can see that the committee is not able to answer this question. I, I don't think this is that hard of a question for us to answer.
But it's also a big, a lot of questions.
I'll tell you why I find it hard.
Yeah, sure.
So we have been doing this policy subcommittee, which, which you've asked, and, and I understand why. You'd like to hear what the outcome of the class size consideration is. And the reason we haven't been able to respond to this, and I'll speak for myself personally, is because it's really friggin hard. There's a lot of information to consider.
Right.
The principal has a ton of information, Pam has a ton of information. It is not easy, particularly, again, speaking for myself, I'm a lawyer, I'm not an educator, I do not know. I'm trying to stay in my lane while at the same time making policy advice back to this committee. And this all relates to your question, because if there were a way to get independent advice on whether there's something we could or should consider in this, with respect to this particular topic, I think that would be informative.
Then that's a yes.
Well, well.
But if we're talking about the $120,000.
I'm not.
Then I'm not for that, but I'm always open for advice from your party.
Okay, because I don't know that we have enough time to do what, what this requires as well.
So, yeah, and we've discussed the different options for this. We've discussed that there could be a $120,000 thing that we choose to take on. We've discussed at the last meeting that there might be more targeted question asked through NASDAQ or, or, or enough, or another opportunity, whatever that may be. My question is simply, is that something we want to explore right now? Because if so, if we want it to have impacts for this budget conversation, we need to make those assignments now. So that's what I'm interested in learning. Do you want to entertain that idea? That's all I'm asking.
To answer any potential questions that we might have.
Go ahead, Pam.
I just respectfully will offer, this is something to consider, which is, I understand Erica's, like, it, it's a lot to take in and to feel like you're making an informed decision, you want somebody to be guiding in that process. We have hired somebody to do that job and she is the high school principal. And this is squarely in her domain. I am over my line with how I'm inserting myself into the process. So if the charge is that we want inefficiency from the high school, then I need to give her that charge and she needs to report to me and then to this group, how she's going to achieve that. She's the scheduler, she is the one that makes the determination, she's charged with knowing it inside and out. So I would just suggest you're not necessarily using your own experts, which you pay for already. Now, if the concern is that for some reason you are uncomfortable with those experts presenting you something, then you're into a different realm and I think, you know, continue your conversation. But we have a lot of people right here at the ready, who with the right planning, um, and reporting schedule could get you a lot of those answers.
And I would even argue that it's a brand new principle, that that is like very party, but they don't have historical biases maybe.
Okay, so if we don't wish to answer the question?
It, it's just something considering it's, it's with respect.
No, no, I, yes.
Slightly different one.
Right, I do understand that.
Okay.
I was just trying to get at, is this something we want to do? If so, we need to start doing it, because we do a lot of talking at this table and then we run out of time and then we talk some more and then we talk some more. So I'm literally just asking a yes or no button. But I get that it's, it's a big, the idea had been to narrow it down with the yes or no's, but I can see that that framing isn't working for our group, so I can reframe it another time.
Raised those alternative options at the, one of the last meetings, I thought we all left agreeing like, yeah, sure, let's, let's see what that looks like. Didn't we all agree to that when we left?
One of the options, that'd be only.
And then she shared some material via email with us?
Yeah. So, so that's what I'm asking, then do people wish to engage that and we're not getting there?
I don't know what it, it depends on the cost.
Okay.
And Pam, I thought, sorry, sorry, go ahead, Jake.
I think part of the reason going around is because we're conflating two issues. One is, are there questions that we could potentially benefit from an outside perspective on? And I think we're all saying, yes, there are things that could be that, what it is, what scope, right? We can talk that to depth. I think the second question is, are we in a position to fund that ourselves or take it on ourselves? And that's where I think I hear her saying, no, we got a tight enough budget already, right? But if there is certain amount of money from a town or the towns that we could potentially engage a conversation if they're interested in doing something that could also be beneficial to us, that's where I think we would want to entertain that conversation. And that, that was my whole intent for putting out that paper at the end of last meeting was to say, are these of potential value to us? That they were the questions that the town has been asking of us for the past year. So I think the challenge to, to your framing of this is that there, there's essentially two questions to be asked. One is about the potential value of external support and the other is, do we pay for it?
To me, a huge part of this is the timing too.
Yeah.
So if, uh, this process outside of our scope and purview had been started at this time last year, when everyone knew that we were, you know, planning on and had been saying for years, a correction. And if we started this process at this time last year for this year's budget, in my opinion, that would be appropriate.
So can I, can I try one more thing then and then close this off? Um, because in the meantime, from the last meeting to this meeting, emails went among the committee and also I had requests from the newspaper and conversations have taken place outside of this, um, committee among the public um, about the status of the operational audit. And if one town voted to hold an operational audit and the other town voted not to, then it's on the school committee to do that.
That's outside of our purview.
No, technically it's not, we would have to find a way to fund it. What I'm trying to get at is, is that something? Because in, in part of those conversations, there was question about who should fund it? I mean, that, none of that was decided. So what I'm trying to get at is, do we as a body think that that ask for an operational audit is something that we need to pursue?
Can I ask a clarification question?
Yes.
The town appropriated the money, right? The town would theoretically put out the RFP. Our only role is to decide whether or not to participate, right? We have access to, or we can provide access to staff, data, wherever else, right? It's, it's time. But right now, that's town funding.
Yes, but what, I, I don't know why I'm not, how, how I'm not getting it from my head out and I can see that I'm not. We have a list of 19 things that we were asked at the all boards meeting to explore and operational audit was one of them. Separately from us doing that, that whole process took place of towns asking for money. That doesn't absolve us from answering the question of, are we interested in pursuing an operational audit? I mean, I, I think that it's fair, we committed to explore these things, I'm not saying we need to, but I think we need to choose to answer the question.
I agree, I think you're right.
Well.
Maybe tonight's not the night we answer it, maybe we think about it in that context, but we have to answer these.
It's complicated because the towns start pursuing this without us and now one town voted for it, the other town didn't, so then what, we have to step in now and, and save the day?
So perhaps, perhaps, uh, perhaps we'll get some input on that in our public hearing.
I would like to make a motion to table this discussion until after our public meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, have a favor? Thank you. Okay. Then with that, we are into school committee comment. Does anyone have school committee comment before we go to the, the closing exercises? So not about ABA yet, yes, Jay?
So I'll just say, I was reading an article about, uh, the challenges of flying recently and how, you know, all these conflicts are breaking out on planes and, you know, among people who are trying to just travel to their destination. And they made a really good argument that literally people are being squeezed by the system. Like literally the seats are getting closer together, the bins are getting smaller, they charge you for your baggage, the people are trying to take more on. We are in a similar situation, right? We are being squeezed by the system through Proposition Two and a Half, our tax system, even college admissions systems, uh, you know, the, the school choice, that $5,000 uh, cap on school choice was set up in 1993, when it would cost you between $4,000 and $7,000 to educate a student, right? when it would cost you between $4,000 and $7,000 to educate a student, right? The Carnegie system that we use for high school and graduation and college admissions, that was established in 1892, right? And with still the, right, these systems are squeezing us, and we're, we're in conflict either with each other and or with the towns, in part because of the larger system. So I think it, I just wanted to acknowledge that, and, and, you know, the conflicts are not always of our own making, but also we could potentially turn our attention to the system to advocate, you know, rather than looking always internally, you know, what can we advocate for change outside of it? So I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, the tension is not always personal. The tension is, how do we balance these system pressures?
Thank you. Yep.
I have been trying as much as possible to talk to some of our town partners and get a sense for how we get to the place we all want to be at the end of this budget cycle. And the one thing I've heard consistently is that, it's amazing, actually, a little bit ironic, people want to hear more from us. Now, I realize they could be here today listening to us and they're not, but, but we also have to acknowledge that, right? The community, for the most part, is not at these meetings. Thank you to all of you who are, but a lot of people are not. And we need to, this is something Jake has made as a point many times, but I just, I was wondering if we want to think about posting, like, key topics in the cricket. If we want to do something more to reach out to the community, to understand, there's, there's some key points and questions that come up again and again. Why is it enrollment declining and the budget is increasing? Some of these things have, have answers, and the answers are not actually overly complicated. What's complicated is people start talking about them without. And so I want to put that out there. If we can think about, Jake has suggested different ways, but I just thought, like, what about the cricket? What about we draft an article that we agree on and publish as, like, FAQs or something?
So in my chairman's report, I think I mentioned that I, we just met with tons of, and, and that'll be on the December 19th agenda to discuss the plan for us to be able to do that.
I didn't realize that that was actually this.
Yep.
And keep in mind, we just, we just voted goals that include some public outreach, so theoretically, we should be thinking about that as a group.
And Avi just.
Wait, I made him happy.
We're not going anywhere until he comes back, because that is the end of the meeting. That's not.
Well, in the meantime, here at Graham, I would like to just probably thank you for putting together this budget. I think it did represent what we asked to do initially pretty well. And you don't have an easy job, so thank you. Especially in times like what Jake just mentioned, where there are squeezes coming from all different tribes.
About the kids. Just go to a Saturday night, Night of Stars and the Capes at all.
We were right on time.
We will. This is very.
We cannot speak to an empty chair. Yeah, well. You do not get to ghost.
Somebody mentioned he was short of word, and that is not my experience. He knows that. We have the two seconds. I'll be last, if you have it. Just take two seconds, two seconds, and then it's two hours later.
Any comments, Sean? Closing comments?
No, I think I said enough.
Are you saying that we have any closing comments?
I'm just waiting for Abby to. This is kind of.
Do you have any closing comments, Ben?
I think we're probably all closer to being on the same page than we realize. It's, it's when we all start with the potential difficulties of getting there with different things. I'm optimistic on healthcare, and I think we can probably do some of the pieces, but not all of the pieces in the ass. I said, this is pretty classic. We're all waiting.
We would like to close the meeting by just briefly expressing, just go right around. Go ahead, Anna.
Yes, I, I mean, like, you know, thank you so much. We are not an easy group. I'm not an easy person. I ask a lot of questions. And I do think that you have always, you know, from a finance perspective, I, I can see that, you know, you have interpreted in your work and the way that you carry, you know, things, like, you know, situations and whatnot. So I appreciate you, even though it's only been another year and a half. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Avi. Your ability to take whatever questions that you receive, even if you, even if they might strike some as critical, and to say thank you for your feedback is remarkable. And I think that, that attitude really helped. It helped, it helped all of us, and it's, but mostly it's just a really commendable personal quality that you're able to take so much feedback from so many sides in a really chaotic environment and always make us somehow feel like the crazy questions we ask are valuable to you. So thank you very much for making this first year a good educational experience, and we're going to really miss you.
I agree. Thank you for your service and you handle everything with class and grace, and we'll miss you. And you're a smart guy, hard worker, and over your goings. So I don't think I can say it any better than the group did at the beginning of the meeting, or that Erica just did. I'll just say that my first real interaction with you was around the Essex playground. And, you know, I think Erica just said it very well, which was, you know, there was a lot of kind of tensions around that. We were, you know, we were dealing COVID, we were dealing with, you know, all kinds of complications to that. And you always like, all right, let's ground ourselves. What's the framing? You know, and, you know, honored everybody's questions and perspectives. So from that point forward, on the building committee and on here, I've seen that over and over again, so thank you.
Yeah. I sent a note to you when I first heard that you were moving on, so just a simple thank you, Avi. It's been a real pleasure to get to know you over the past three years now. And I just really appreciate everything you've done for this district and your service over the past 15 years. That's, that's an amazing role. So congratulations and congratulations on what I'm sure will be your next great opportunity.
And I will just say that I actually did go back and look at all those management letters. I did. Those were long before my time, and I went back and looked at them all. And I really appreciate what you've done for this district, and in particular, for the support you've given me since serving as chairperson. You've always been available and willing to listen and willing to give the feedback that I need in the moment I need it, and I just really, really appreciate it. And I would really like to hear what you think we need to know. Parting shots.
Parting shots. No, I, I just want to thank everyone for that opportunity. I consider myself very fortunate to have worked here. This has been, had a lot of different, interesting careers, and they've all had positive things. But I think serving kids and serving staff and the communities is just very rewarding. And I talked about those relationships, and that includes school, so thank you. And I look, you guys know, we're always at some type of a crossroads. I think it's really pivoted quite a bit when we were trying to come to a multi-year kind of correction, and that didn't happen. And sometimes best laid plans don't go the way you want. I'm just hopeful that, you know, like any, I guess, I'm a history major, you know, you take what you learn and you hope you use that. So I hope we can learn from some of the things and continue to keep the district strong. And I guess there's just one, one specific thing. I just, we talked a little bit about tonight, and I will be here for the policy committee group's conversation later, get to weigh in. I know we're working on this reserves policy, and I think I would just say I strongly encourage this board to keep our reserves strong. And, you know, we, we have a lot of experts from Standard and Coors, they're a global firm, they're saying keep them high. We have our auditors who are saying, keep the flexibility. We have the financial partners who are in the capital markets are saying, keep them strong. I heard tonight's conversations, I think Jake mentioned, a lot of people mentioned it. What is the magic way we can try to find a way to get a little bit of everything and respect the assessments, keeping them low? So to me, I just feel like whatever policy comes out, I really hope it does not undercut statutory limits that are there. I saw some suggestions that they, we lower our number of the reserves below what's required allowable in the state law. I think that would be a huge mistake, would not serve our constituents, which are students and staff, to make sure we can, and the community to make sure we can keep our buildings strong. So when you guys review that, I would just say that that is really where our flexibility is. We have a capital plan to be prepared for that, and I really hope we don't undercut those numbers that give us that flexibility entire on hands. So I wish everyone luck. If I can be helpful down the road, please call me with transition items or anything, but thank you again for the opportunity.
And I don't think, so who knows?
Thank you.
They left a very, very.
Thank you. All right.
Sorry.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.